There we go. Oh, sorry, I gotta get my glasses on. I was just chatting away. Okay, so we will call to order the regular meeting of Ohi Planning Commission for Wednesday, June 18th, six o'clock. Sherry, can you do roll call for us?
Yes, Chair Trent.
Here.
Vice Chair Murphy.
Here.
Commissioner Bennett.
Here.
Commissioner Graham.
Here.
And Commissioner Chesley absent.
All right, thank you. Jamie, do you want to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Wow.
I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. You'll do the next time? Okay, thank you. Okay, approval of the agenda. Any changes?
I have a question.
Yeah.
We were, it was suggested to us at the end of the last meeting that we go and visit the site of the manufactured, of a manufactured home. And I was wondering if any, I went, Judy went, I just wondered if anyone else went. And if so, when would we download that?
Oh, good question.
So I, just, we can hold that for commission member reports?
That's what I was saying, a commission report would be good for that one.
That's towards the end. So certainly that's, that's when you would have that discussion.
Thank you.
Yep. No changes.
No changes. Perfect. Awesome. All right, so this portion of the meeting is set up for public communications. This is again for items that are not on the agenda for tonight. And, and we cannot respond to those, those comments. I don't see any cards. Sherry, anything online?
No.
No? Okay, perfect. We'll move on then to the consent items. We'll start with the meetings of the prior meeting from May 21st. Anybody have any changes? Yeah, draft minutes.
I move we accept the consent items.
Yeah, yeah, that's what we're doing.
Second.
Okay, perfect. Sherry, roll call.
Graham?
Aye.
Bennett?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes. Perfect. All right, now we'll move on to disclosure of site visits, ex parte contacts for the items on the agenda. I have no ex parte contacts. I have visited the one site that's on the docket for tonight.
Same here.
Same here.
Same here.
All right, moving on. Discussion item, concept review regarding the zone change from the business professional to commercial to allow the sale of alcohol and bring in existing gas station and associated convenience store into conformance. Lucas, you wanna?
I'll take that.
Mara, all right, perfect.
So, thank you Chair and Commissioners. Whoops. So while Taylor's getting that up for me, this is a concept review regarding a zone change from business professional to commercial to expand an existing gas station and convenience store to allow the sale of alcohol.
And, and just for clarity, no decisions being made tonight, correct?
That is true. No, no decision is being made tonight. It's a, it's a conceptual review. And so you'll be receiving my presentation and the applicant is here to add anything else. Both of us are here for questions and then they'd love to receive your comments.
Awesome, awesome.
Okay, so pursuant to section 10 dash 2.503 of the Ohi municipal code, neither gas station or convenience store are permitted in the BP zone. However, they're both permitted in the C1 zone. So the zone change that's being requested would also, or for a conceptual review of course, would also bring the gas station and the convenience store into conformance. The site is located at 1124 Maricopa Highway and it's in, on the screen above in red. The expectation, as we've just discussed, is that the planning commission will provide the applicant with comments and no decision is being made at this meeting. So the current general plan land use designation for the project site is general commercial. The primary purpose of this designation is to provide general shopping, commercial service needs for residents and workers, as well as the needs of highway users and tourists. Both the C1 and BP zone designations are consistent with this general plan land use designation. Therefore, a general plan amendment is not required along with the proposed change of zone. So this gas station that's here, has been here for many years. Section 10 dash 2.303 of the municipal code provides the planning commission with the authority to approve a conditional use permit subject to findings and conditions for uses that are not permitted. And in 1996, the planning commission at that time found the service station was not more objective, objectionable or detrimental than the uses that are permitted in the BP zone. And at that time approved a conditional use permit for the gas station use. A little aside here, in your packets, you have the use chart from the, from the municipal code that shows what's permitted in C1 zone as well as BP and other commercial zones. Aside from the gas station, the convenience store was added later without benefit of permit. The recent request for the sale of alcohol would essentially expand the current use and further the non-compliance for the zone. So hence, the, the community development department determined that the planning commission review in consideration of a zone change to a designation that permits the existing non-conforming uses and including the sale of alcohol and is consistent with the surrounding area is the appropriate path forward. The project site is located approximately 400 feet east of, actually it's, it's not going to be east, it's going to be northwest of the intersection of 33 and 150. And it's located between medical offices and the State of California Transportation Storage Yard, both immediately adjacent on either side. It's directly across from Vons Shopping Center. That, on that site also includes a standalone liquor store. And the site is approximately 748 feet from Matilla High Junior High School. So as you can see on this slide here on the screen, I've included the other zones that are immediately adjacent and across the street. And you'll see the high school up here, pointing to it. And with that, if you have any questions for me, and I, like I said, we do have the applicant here. The applicant submitted a letter to you and I believe that ended up, if nothing else, in, in your email today. And just providing their, their stance, I guess you'd say. And again, what you're doing tonight is providing comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for staff?
What's behind the Ohi gas station?
So immediately adjacent, I'm going to ask the applicant. However, beyond that and the zone actually is, is a residential zone and there are residential uses. I'm going to point to it on the screen here, but I think if you're asking about right here.
Yes.
I am going to defer to the applicant.
Okay. Before we call the applicant up, any other questions for staff? Okay?
I have a, I have a question, staff. The BP allows for professional offices, as I understand it.
Yes.
And was, and this is asking you to speculate, or Lucas to speculate. Was that because there was a hospital nearby and so they wanted to leave space for professional offices of doctors in the neighborhood? I mean, does anybody think back to that point? And is there any shortage of hospitals, doctor spaces in the neighborhood?
I can't speak to the, the hospital piece directly. However, in the BP, it has very similar feel to it from a use standpoint. It has a little bit more leaning into kind of an office type of atmosphere versus a C1 having more retail kind of friendly piece to it. The other thing that I think is worth noting, I didn't see it, I was kind of looking for it in the staff report, but if you look at the other gas stations that we have within the C1, both of them already have convenience stores and went through the process. And it wasn't recent. I mean, the Chevron was in the eighties and the, what's the other one? The, not the Chevron. I'm sorry, the Shaw was in the eighties and the Chevron was in, in 2002. So you've already got two gas stations onsite in the city that already have these convenience pieces. But they're in the C1. Here, oddly enough, this entire stretch is either BP or has an IR1 designation. I can theorize, I usually don't like to give opinion on, on these types of things, but I can theorize the reason why that may have been rezoned. And it may have been rezoned based on some old planning theories, which is in order to modify or move forward with a different use, you rezone an area so it becomes non-conforming. So eventually what ends up happening, either you maintain that use in perpetuity, it's non-conforming, or you end up having that use go away over time. 2004 is really the last time that there was any sort of significant changes that took place, which is also the time in which significant zone or code updates took place as well. So during that time, there's a lot of shifting of the cards that took place, as well as rezoning of, of several properties.
Has the city of Ohi, like, been aware that there's a non-conforming use in terms of the convenience store having been built and operated there? And have there been any, you know, penalties or fines assessed by the city for this or any sort of communication?
No, no fines from a co-compliance standpoint, although there have been complaints that have been received from a, kind of a maintenance standpoint for the site. They've obliged and they've, they've come into conformance with the standards as it relates to the BP.
The city has not said, hey, you shouldn't be operating this convenience store for the last, like, 20, 30 years?
We have been aware of it, but we have not gone after them exclusively.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
And part of that reason, just so that you're aware, we typically are waiting to hear for someone to complain about specific pieces and then we look at whether or not there's conformance with the code. Not necessarily taking a proactive approach to conformance. There's other examples in the city where that has been the case. It's been brought before this, this body somewhat contentiously, with community members coming out, kind of expressing concern. I don't sense that same hostility with this type of, of use, given the surrounding uses and more importantly, the uses that are across the street.
This is for council. Is, are there any laws that prevent the sale of alcohol within X number of feet of, you know, school or a daycare or a hospital? Across the street, there's obviously the liquor store that's there. Vons sells alcohol. But I'm curious what we're butting up against.
Yeah, it isn't, oh, go ahead. I was gonna say, it's interesting because you do have an existing use, both Vons and the-
Attitude adjustment.
Attitude adjustment, I was like, something adjustment, which is directly across the street. And both of those have alcohol use, so.
See, see where I was go, where I was going with this was, was it speaking to a, a planning mindset at the time that the zoning was set for this area, was there some thought that there had to be a minimum amount of medical office space around a hospital to make the hospital viable and the medical office space viable, so that there were this, there were the diversity of specialties that one likes to see around a hospital. And I, and, and, you know, there are lots of locations for gas stations, but there's only one hospital and one, one proximate parcel or set of parcels that could service that important municipal need, so.
I think the perception is probably there, given the, the zoning that you're seeing directly across from the hospital, consistency from a zoning standpoint. So I think the perception is there, but whether or not there was intention to that, there's no evidence.
Mara, can you, can you pull up the zoning map of Ohi? I'm just curious, you know, to see where the other BP zones are. You might have to go online, I guess, and pull it up.
While she's looking, I can answer. Apologies, I don't, off the top of my head. It's regulated by the state. We don't have any local codes. So they can, ABC can deny any retail license located within the vicinity of a church, a hospital, or within at least 600 feet of schools, public playgrounds, and nonprofit youth facilities. Usually the ABC will deny a license in those situations when there's evidence that the normal operation of the business is contrary, like, to the public welfare and morals. So there's already problems with the business and then by giving them an alcohol license, it tends to amplify it. And they won't issue a new license within 100 feet of a residence unless the applicant can establish the operation of the proposed premises, won't interfere with the quiet enjoyment of a residential property.
Do, do we have a license that's been issued yet in this case?
I think they're taking over a license.
I mean, okay, ABC has not objected to this. I mean, don't they get a say in it?
They are the ones that have the say.
Okay, so-
For that type of license, yes.
What I'm, what I'm asking is, this is probably within 100 feet of a residence and ABC's okay with this, right?
Well, the ABC license, you would ask the applicant about that.
Okay.
And, and as far as the zoning map, we don't, I don't have access to the internet to bring that up on the screen for you.
Darn it. Okay.
We, we just had one. Was that last month?
Yeah.
Can we include that in, like, the, the actual decision?
Yeah.
We, yeah, in the packet for-
Because if I'm not mistaken, there's very few BP zones within the city. And I think they're mostly concentrated in this little area, if I'm not mistaken.
They're on the north side of, of Ohi Avenue mostly, and they, they kind of just curtail until you get down into, and close to downtown and then it turns into C1.
Yeah. Another quick question for you, Lucas. I noticed on page, well, this is the, where our code is outlining what the uses are for these zones.
Behind.
Sorry. And I was trying to find what, what classifies as gas station, is that the, is that a service?
It's a service station, yeah.
Okay, so in the BP zone, it's not, a service station is not allowed currently.
That's correct.
And that's what the conditional use permit is for, right? Or the-
So, a, a service station is not permitted in a BP zone. However, if a use is not permitted in a zone, the planning commission does have the ability to approve or to, to consider a conditional use permit for a use that's not permitted. And that's what happened in 1996.
In 96, got it.
And we were able to get a zoning map up for you.
Oh, okay, perfect. And then second question. For the C1, I'm trying to find where it allows for alcohol beverages for sale off-site. I found onsite, but I didn't see off-site. For off-site consumption. I don't know if that's different. Is that the same?
It's the same.
It's the same, okay.
The interesting thing is, is if you go to, if you try to find a definition, it won't give you the definitions.
Okay. So then, second question is, it does say that we can provide alcohol beverage sales onsite with a CUP. So we don't necessarily have to do a zone change?
Well, the reason for the zone change, and I tried to describe it in the, in the staff report, is that it would allow for the, the existing uses to be, to be conforming.
So the, the extra-
The gas station and the, and the convenience store.
More toward-
So then no more, no, no more need for a CUP?
Correct.
That non-conforming convenience, you know, store automatically falls into conformity?
Correct.
Okay, so the service station would be allowed with a CUP, but the convenience store, where is that? Is that allowed in the C1 convenience store?
So the convenience store is, is permitted in the C1 zone. You'll see that on page three of six of your packet. So the, the sale of alcohol is an expansion of this existing non-conforming use. That, that's how we're looking at it. And so-
I see. Okay, so this is, so in the C1 zone, convenience store is permitted, alcohol beverage sales onsite permitted, service station is conditionally used permitted?
Well, the service station actually is, I believe is, oh.
In the C1.
You are right. It's, service station is a, is a conditionally used permit. Which it does, which it has.
Okay, cool. So if we change it to the C1, obviously it'll, it'll hit a couple boxes, but do we still need a CUP for the service station?
No, it already has a CUP and a CUP is, goes on forever in perpetuity unless the use is abandoned for over 180 days.
Okay, got it. All right. And then currently now, it's in the BP. So the service station, we, which has a CUP to override the, the issue, it would need another one for the convenience store. And then it would, it does allow for alcohol beverage sales onsite with a CUP. It's just the convenience store would be the issue with the BP, right?
It's not an issue because there's already a CUP.
Well, there's, I, I think-
The convenience store is non-conforming. Yeah, they built that after. No, no, they built that after the CUP was established.
Correct.
So the CUP was for the service station. Afterwards, they built the convenience store without, you know, the benefit of a permit. And so that's why it's a non-conforming, yeah.
Right. And a CUP could be granted by the planning commission under this, in the same way that the existing gas station was permitted through a CUP, because it's just not allowed in the zone. And so-
Right. But in theory, we could do a CUP for the convenience store and the alcohol sales.
That's correct.
So I'm, I'm so sorry. I know that you just talked about this, but I was reading, trying to catch up on, on the service station piece. I see that for C1, you would need a CUP for a service station.
Correct.
So if we, if we change the zoning to a C, C1 designation, will we then have to grant a CUP for the service station?
They already have a CUP. So you would not have to grant another one.
But I guess that's what I was getting at, is the CUP would fall off because we're changing the zoning? Or does the CUP carry over to the new zoning designation?
The CUP carries over.
Great.
Good question.
Yeah, okay.
I have a, I have a question, staff.
Can I just, can I clarify that just real quickly?
Yeah, yeah.
We would take a closer look at that CUP. There may need to be an adjustment to ensure that what's coming online. So typically with, with applications of a zone change that then potentially necessitates a CUP, is we take a closer look at that existing CUP for consistency. If needed, it could be an amendment to bring that into conformance with what we're looking at here today.
And I would recommend-
And that would be concurrent. So you'd be ta, be taking action on the, the use piece second, obviously the zoning piece first.
Could we take care of that in a single resolution or a single ordinance? Or we?
Yes. It would be an ord, yeah, it would be an ordinance, yeah, because it's a change in the map.
Right. Great. Thank you for bringing that up. So if, if you'll notice, the BP, we don't have a whole lot of them. You see, I'm still trying to understand why we even have them, but, because they seem very similar to C1. I'm still trying to wrap my head around what's the purpose of the, of the BP, but-
They are extremely similar. And, and to be fair, before 20, before the 2004 changes, because there was some, some very significant changes that took place in 2004. It was kind of an overhaul, but not only to the mapping, but also to the, to the ordinance, ordinances themselves. There was a number of additional zones that were, were basically, basically created and modified. So it, it expanded upon what we're looking at here today. I know right now, from a general plan standpoint, we're looking at whether or not there's a need for this many, given that a lot of the times, there's some redundancy, some very similar types of, of zones. And I'm not saying that that, we're looking to move in that direction, but we're certainly taking a closer look at it right now.
Yeah, it's almost like it's a, a transition from commercial into more of like a residential type of business structure.
With the VMU does the same thing.
Same thing, yeah.
Right.
It's just, because I'm looking at like the, where that, that's at the, it looks like Clough Park, around Clough Park, right? Is that where the, those little, the original blue ones are? Yeah, the blue squares?
Right.
Yeah, those weird kind of angles.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the bank would be over there, okay. And then, then it gets up into the old, which used to be a gas station, but I think it's like a summer camp?
Shop summer camp, yeah.
Yeah, it's a shop now, retail store.
Yeah, it's a retail store, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. But it used to be a gas station, I believe. And then, then that looks, I think that is the old, or is that, that's Caltrans, right?
Oh, I have a new, oh, you're talking about the, the larger piece of property there? Yes, that's Caltrans.
So it's kind of an eclectic mix of stuff, BP.
It is.
Yeah, it's very similar to our C1. Okay, cool. And then it gets into that one. And then, looks like, yeah, to Jamie's point, the hospital and some of the, the medical facilities that we have. And that's very strange. Look at the one at the very end of Ohi Avenue, at the end of the road there, that little tiny blue. What is that?
I, if I recall correctly, I think it's agricultural type of-
Vacant.
Oh, it's vacant.
Is it vacant?
Yeah.
I thought it was agricultural. Okay.
Sherry?
Thank you, Sherry.
That's very interesting. Yeah, because those other two, it looks like those are also in that 14 acre vacant lot, but they're just set aside zone for BP.
Yeah, they're both, I mean, they're both vacant. You look and you see just open area. And there was a map that was actually recorded in that area.
Really?
That's why you still see the, the little squares in there.
Okay, all right. And then across the street, obviously is all C1. That's where Vons is and the liquor store and all that good stuff.
Right.
Okay.
The more I dive into this, the more confused I am as to why it's owned the way that it is.
Totally, I'm right there with you.
Yeah.
I'm still trying to wrap my head around the, the purpose of the BP zone.
But, but yeah, why it's still there for, given where we're at with Ohi, with the city.
Yep.
I have a question, staff.
Yeah.
Do planning commissions and planning staffs ever get involved in not only the nature of what's being sold, but the packaging or quantity in which it's sold, meaning, does there any restriction on selling singles, meaning a single can of beer, a pint of liquor, whatever, as opposed to a six-pack of beverage and a, a larger quantity of spirits?
It's the ABC that regulates the type of alcohol and- the license type. And, and anything alcohol related would, would fall under the ABC's guidelines.
Thank you.
But I think it's more type of alcohol.
It's typically type and consumption is what they're focused on.
Yep.
And, and location.
Location.
So that usually with a ABC license, like, for consumption, there's a footprint that you're allowed to consume alcohol in the business. That doesn't apply here, or like, there's like a bottle shop permit, right, where you have to take it off-site. They have levels of ability to sell alcohol, hard liquor, just wine and beer. They're all different classes of licenses.
Okay, cool. Are we ready for the applicant?
Yeah.
Yeah, you want to come on up? Applicant representing Ohi Gas. How you guys doing?
Hi, good afternoon, or good evening, rather. My name's Evelyn Abassi. I'm on, here on behalf of Ohi Gas Inc. This is Neil Abassi, which is one of the owners of the gas station that's been here for decades. I, just to answer the, some questions, Mr. Bennett, I believe that there was a pet hospital behind the gas station. And is there any other questions? Do you have questions for me prior to?
For the applicant, yeah. I mean, as, as their counsel as well. But I guess I'm curious, like, first and foremost, why seeking the zoning change instead of, you know, a new CUP?
Well, we did. That was the first approach. I reached out to Sherry and I asked, said, you know, we want to do a CUP on this. We just want to be able to put some cans in the, in this shop. And though I was told that that was not an option, that we would need to do a zoning, requested zoning.
As I look in the, you know, the packet that's been provided to us, when it comes to alcohol beverage sales onsite, for C1, it's, you know, permitted, right, which makes sense why we're here today. But if it stays BP, it says it can be approved under a CUP.
So that would be ideally a better, in our opinion, like, a route to go for us?
You would prefer the CUP, you said?
I would think so, yeah, just because that's the goal. This is not, we're not really trying to change the zoning chain. There's no redevelopment, no new construction. We're just trying to be a viable, just to keep up with everybody. There's, the times are changing. We just want availability to, to help better serve the needs of the customers that do come in. Uh, there's, the ti- the times are changing. Uh, we just want availability to, to help better serve the needs of the, the customers that do come in. And so, you know, just-
To Sherry's point, it may be less about the alcohol sale and more about the non-conforming use of the convenience store. And I'm just trying to understand, maybe, um, staff can help us, under this, uh, you know, the zoning regulations and the tables that are here, what would the convenience store be considered? Like, service station is for the gas, but what do we actually consider? Convenience and liquor stores, I see where-
A convenience store is actually listed, um-
Yep, I see that. And that, and that's where, maybe where Sherry has said the CUP is the wrong route, because under BP zoning, it doesn't seem to allow for a CUP or for it to be permitted under BP.
You basically have to get two CUPs, yeah.
Yeah, and I, I could have asked staff for this, so apologies. In real time.
Yeah, it's, it's all good.
You know, just so you're aware as to like the ABC, um, rules, um, the, right now, they, they're waiting for approval from the city to have it transferred. In two thousand and twenty-two, um, it was the first time that Ojai Gas decided, thought, you know, people keep asking, you know, do you have something? And they have to send them away. They decided to make an application, to do an application, uh, to, for beer and wine. And we were told, or they were told, that they needed, um, that we needed to acquire a local license, that the city wasn't going to give it away. And so for that reason, that expired because they didn't have anybody. So now, um, Ojai Gas has located a local beer and wine license. And, you know, and so that's, we're, we're just seeking guidance of what can we do to just try to help keep this business afloat? And I know it seems, and it's not so much like how it's, maybe there's other places, local, locally, that do have out, sell beer and wine that are close by. But this business is at a disadvantage because it can't keep up competitively. And with other things like electric cars and things that we just want, they just want to stay the foot, we're not asking for special treatment, just want the same treatment. And I think that when, that when they acquired the business, they didn't even realize, you know, it just seems like that, that it was a commercial building. You know, they didn't realize there was even a zoning issue. And so I think I'm just wanting to go, know guidance and suggestions of what you guys think we can do to help this is a co- a longstanding business that's been here for years and we want to keep them here if possible and-
Could you clarify for me?
Absolutely.
The applica- have you applied to ABC for this transfer, but it hasn't yet been approved?
Yes, they have, uh, they have gone through ABC. Um, ABC needs the city to, to, to allow that, to ha- to allow alcohol to be sold. And they have met the requirements as to the distances and things of that sort. We can tell you that, you know, they operate, the, the station operates from six to ten PM. If the city had any like conditions that alcohol be sold at this time, anything, but, you know, just to have an opportunity to service the client, uh, the customers would be ideal.
Sure. And, and again, this is a, I know you have it here, but just for clarity, this is a, a transfer. So meaning that ABC has already granted somebody in the area with the license, but that person is not using it.
Yeah, it was, it was a pharmacy that had the beer and liquor license that was local here and they closed down. So they have escrows open, but they wanted to, um-
Yes.
Yes, the pharmacy, we all remember the pharmacy.
Oh, do you remember? I don't know, oh.
Yeah, it was, that was five years ago?
Yeah, it came before us to grant that, that application, yeah.
Okay, so.
And so confirming just beer and wine, no hard liquor.
No.
ABC's approved this, so waiting on the city and then the liquor license will be approved for transfer and then you'll be able to sell. It's not like they're going to have to do a whole review after this is approved.
No, correct.
Okay.
I guess the fact that you have suggested that we change the zoning means that you have analyzed this and that that is a better route than an additional CUP?
It is the route. If they're wanting to, to solidify the convenience piece, which is what we were talking about earlier, it is the route. Now, I do have a couple of questions.
Could you expand on that?
Okay.
I'm just, I'm, I'm still not clear. I mean, it sounds like a, a CUP is a simple thing. Whereas a zoning change is a couple of meetings and, and, and city council and on and on. It, it seems like a, a longer, more difficult path.
Oh, it's just, it's abso- both, both paths are discretionary. A conditional use permit is not a slam dunk. There are findings that are required.
Conditions.
Getting conditions typically if, if the findings can be made. And then on top of that, you're looking at a zone change, which is a legislative action. So that, that in itself requires pretty substantial findings to be made as well.
Just to get the second-
And a two-step process.
I'm, I'm sorry that I'm, I'm not following you. Um, you're saying that even if, if we went the route of, of two CUPs, that there would have to be a zoning change?
Well, I think it's, to clarify, the convenience store itself is not a permitted use.
Okay.
So what they're wanting to do is to go from a non-conforming use to a conforming use. And really, from a zoning standpoint, the zoning code and the general plan speaks to that. You want to come into a conforming use based on that zone. And right now, they're in a BP zone that is not conforming to what their, what their use is on the ground right now.
So we couldn't even get a CUP under the existing zoning for the convenience store?
There is no, there is no CUP process for what they're looking at doing.
Okay. I have, I have no objections to what, what their goal is. I'm just trying to find the best path to get there.
Yeah, absolutely. No, very fair. Question though, uh, to, to Judy's point, there is a current CUP that was issued in nineteen ninety-six for non-conformance for the gas station, because technically there can't be a gas station in the BP.
Hold on, let me, I'm being introduced with some evidence.
No, you're good, yeah.
Yeah, that, this is-
No, you're good.
This is true.
I can, I can listen to what you were saying though.
Uh, the table, two, four, under BP and service station.
Yeah, it's not allowed.
It's not allowed. And so it's really interesting that we did grant one in nineteen ninety-six. I do think we should not be granting CUPs or any sort of, you know, like approvals for any additional uses, where you have a business that is already, uh, in non-conformance for their zoning and did not get a proper permit. I think that sets a bad precedent for other applicants moving forward. And so I do like this idea of changing the zoning here, having the CUP carry over, just washing away the nineteen ninety-six CUP that technically shouldn't have been allowed under-
Well, I do, I just want to say one thing about that and that the code and the section is in the staff report. The code does allow for the planning commission to approve a conditional use permit when it's not allowed at all.
Yeah.
So, but I, so I just wanted to make sure that, I just wanted to make sure you were aware of that.
So then we got, we have to erase everything we just talked about?
So, yeah, um, yes.
So what is the, the easiest path forward here, knowing the applicants have said a CUP would be fine?
The easiest path, the cleanest path is, might not be the easiest path, and that is to change the zone.
Okay. And then that's an ordinance that goes to the city council versus a CUP comes to the planning commission? Okay.
So now behind me, they're talking and so probably want to hear.
Yeah.
But, um, and what they're talking about is an expansion to a non-conforming use.
Okay.
Which is what-
It's an option.
Which is, right, and because of-
In very clear, simple language, please.
Okay, so.
The complexities of zoning.
Clear as mud as our favorite Ojai muni code is.
Hang on, Taylor, if you don't mind. Do, do we have any more questions for the applicant? I don't want them to have to feel like they have to stand here forever.
Yeah, sure.
Do you have any more questions?
Well, you can-
No, don't look at me, it's-
They can come back up if we have more.
Yeah, you should, we can call you back up if we have some-
Go sit.
Yeah, go, go sit, get, be comfortable. You don't have to stand up there.
Okay, so, after revisiting the code, it appears you have two pathways to do this. The pathway that's being proposed, where you require that it's zoned, they come into conformance. Um, there is a, a code in the non-conforming use chapter that allows the expansion of a non-conforming use. But you have to make findings, so it may, it, you can, whoo, my brain's working faster than my mouth. So if there's an existing legal non-conforming use, it can be minimally expanded, subject to granting a conditional use permit in compliance with, you know, Article twenty-four, if you can make the following findings. The expansion is minimally, is minimal as determined by the commission. The expansion would not adversely affect or be, uh, material detrimental to adjoining properties. There's a need for relief of overcrowded conditions for modernization in order to properly operate the use. The use is existing and has not been discontinued for a hundred and eighty days. And then there's more.
It's crazy.
And then you have to make the conditional use findings on top of it.
Why do we have this right for non-conforming uses where we want our businesses and like our, our residences to be in, in conformance?
So this is from two thousand and four, and I think that in speaking with Lucas, that was a time of modernization in the city and maybe, uh, one of the last real efforts where we, correct me if I'm wrong, we came up with VMU and there were these pushes for these other zones. We moved away from the BP. You have better history than I am.
A lot of the properties were zoned BP and then, and then transferred over to the C one.
A C one, I'm sorry.
VMU was introduced and then really kind of spread throughout.
So there was a growth period during this time where there was a change in how the city handled it. And I think we find these little treasures in the muni code where it's like, mm, we should probably look at these things. You know, it's been, what, twenty, a little over twenty years?
So this is the subcommittee I want to be on.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I nerd out on this stuff, so.
So you do, but I mean, it, to Lucas's point, what we hope for is conformance.
Right.
Right? Like, the goal is always conformance, but you have, you have this release valve right now if it-
We have an option.
To, to allow them, if you can make findings that it's, it's minimally, uh, an expansion of the use.
When you say-
The impacts of this aren't any different.
Taylor, when you say make findings, could you expand upon that?
So I think those findings typically get made for you, right, in the resolution. It's, um, most of the time it's in the recital, sometimes it's in the meat of the resolution itself. But staff will go through, and your staff reports are written this way, right, where it will take each of the criteria and it explains to you why it meets that. So, um, like, from a design standpoint, right? If there's certain criteria that it has to meet, right, for like the arcade.
Yeah, aesthetics.
Right, aesthetics. Staff will go through and break down exactly how the, the design standards are consistent with the code. Um, oftentimes it requires findings of like consistently, consistency with the general plan. So they'll walk through like how this project meets this criteria, or they have to say, you know what, we need a variance to not be able, we can't meet this criteria variance is needed, right?
Yeah, I, I am leaning towards, um, the zone change for conformance purposes. To Commissioner Graham's point, I think, I think the BP, we, it seems like we'd have to just jump through a bunch of hoops. And, I mean, we could make it work, but it would require a lot of, you know, CUPs and it's, still would be non-conforming.
It's the easiest path forward though for the applicant.
I, I agree with you.
To do the, to do-
To do the CUP.
Yes.
I do, I do agree.
However, yeah, sorry.
Oh, no, no, I was to go, you, you finish your-
However, I, I don't think that we should set precedence here to be able to reward, you know, people or businesses that are in non-conformance. In this situation, I do think it makes sense to change the zoning. We're still technically rewarding, but we're not doubling down on all these CUPs that are happening. And then when we like revise our, our ordinance and our, our code, I think we need to think about like fundamental fairness and not allow for these discretionary things to happen, you know, from a planning commission in the future, based on one applicant versus another applicant and how they feel one way or the other. It should be like our objective design standards that are measurable and verifiable. I've been waiting to say that, yes.
I, I, to, to elaborate on that, the BP sounds like it's a, a zone that we want to eventually sunset or get rid of event, in the future. Because it seems to be a little archaic and looking through all the required, the permitted uses, the C one is much more expansive. It's got a lot more options for folks. The BP is very limited on what it allows. So I think that it, it does make sense to, to move this over.
Mr. Chairman, may I take a contrary point of view?
For sure.
And I didn't realize, um, what a tenuous situation gas stations are in until it was pointed out by the applicant.
Yeah, no.
There are a lot of electric vehicles in town. That lot which sat empty with the Tesla chargers and the other chargers is now jam-packed with, with vehicles. And those are all vehicles who aren't buying gas instead of getting charged. And, you know, and obviously, many people are getting charged at home. And that, that puts a very tough competitive environment for a gas station. And this is, I, I, I think of this as being kind of a scrappy little gas station, because I know it's where I go to get a canister filled with propane. And, uh, so it's, it's offering that service as well as filling tanks of cars with gasoline. But, uh, and I go back to the original intent, and I guess I disagree with the idea that somehow BP should be dis- should be, uh, done away with and turned into a commercial zone. I think they're, they're, they're rightfully zones where business professionals like to set up their business and they like to be among other neighbors who are performing the same function. You know, a little bit of that on Ojai Avenue with some financial services businesses.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
On, on there, um, I could see, I can see, I can see why there's a, a, a benefit to the community of having a BP zone, trying to create a place where people who are in business professions-
Yeah, okay, no, that makes sense.
Can, can have their, their business. And in particular, I, I go back to this question, and I don't know the critical mass for the hospital, but I just know that we, we are limping along there, we're suboptimal, we don't have an operating oper- we don't have an operating room in our hospital. We don't have a licensed operating room in our hospital.
Oh, back up.
Yeah.
What do you mean, we don't have an operating room?
We don't have, there's no, uh, you go to the Ojai Hospital, you can't have an operation. They put you in an, an ambulance and send you to venture.
That's not true.
Can we, can we, we're, we're getting off the rails here. Can we stay, yeah, let's stay on the task at hand here. I, I get where you're going here, but I ask.
Yeah, I will, I'll, I'll attempt. I won't like being challenged, Judy, but, uh-
We'll discuss it after.
The, the thing is, there are, there are a number of critical elements that it takes to keep a hospital viable. And one of them is doctors in the community.
Yeah.
And if you go to most areas where there are hospitals in any city, that the medical offices wind up being close by.
Gotcha.
And so the use of a BP-zoned area by a commercial, um, thing is, uh, if we change the zoning, it means you couldn't put a, and, and you were, you, and you were tough about what can be put into that space. You couldn't put a BP there. Um, you couldn't put a business professional office. So let's say this gas station goes out of business.
Mm-hmm.
And, and it gets, the property gets sold if somebody wants to build a medical busi- bu- building, because it's right next to the hospital.
I, I don't see a reason why they couldn't, because drugstore pharmacy is still allowed in C one.
Well, drugstore pharmacy, but have a professional office space.
Uh, I mean, we have, let's see, I'm trying to find one that's like hospital or-
Medical.
Medical, but I can't, I'm just going to tell them.
On page five of, sorry, I have the microphone. On page five of six.
Clinic, it's, it's permitted. Medical services are permitted under BP and C one. So if we change it to C one, still be permitted for medical?
Hospital is the same.
The hospital requires a conditional use permit for both.
But for both.
Yeah, it's for both. So there's really no difference for business professional versus C one, they're exactly the same.
Same for offices, business administrative or professional permitted for both.
Only difference, it looks like, is veterinarians, animal hospitals and kennels.
Well, and I think that to Mara's point, we were talking about this earlier, like, there's, C one is a lot more expansive on-
It absolutely is.
Right, like, it opens up a lot more opportunities.
Yeah, but you could still have business professional in a-
Sure.
But, but you see, and I, and I guess I'm, the thing I'm, I am concerned about is- Is the elimination of the specific use zones that are are there and encourage the use. In a certain manner, it is not, doesn't benefit the property owner who wants to have as many possible uses as. As possible, and in terms of community, for instance, I, you know, our manufacturing zone. On Bryant Circle, you know, we could, that could be zoned a number of different things, but is it going to encourage? Employment in the manufacturing section, sector.
Sure, but I.
And and the current owners of some of that property would like to put residential in there as a. Uh, a more profitable use for them, um, and so I just, I, the reason I'm. Being such a pain in the butt about this is is that I really do think it's important that we. Try and think through, why was that put in there, what was the thought behind it, what are the needs of of the community? In terms of having a diverse economy and uh and if we. If we knock out that lot that's currently business professional, which means it's perfectly zoned for a. Um, you know, a lot of things, but but a a medical office, um, if we widen it and take. Call it C one, we do away with, we do away with it, will we wind up with other uses in there? It's important for the ecosystem of the hospital.
So I think that that's a very real possibility, if you rezone to C one, you open the door for. I mean, when you glance down at the chart, right, the permitted use, so that. I hear what you're saying, so are you of the opinion then? Of allowing them to, it sounds like you're in favor of.
Voted yet.
I know, but I, well, bringing it back to this applicant, right, so is it?
I'm exploring these issues to find.
No, I'm, there's no judgment. I'm trying to clarify of like, and bring it back to this applicant of. Are you saying that you feel more comfortable with the CUP and making findings and maintaining the BP zone?
Taylor, can I?
I have.
Yeah, please.
I.
Jamie, could you do me a favor, go to attachment C, page five of six. I just want to go through a couple of these with you, just just so we're all clear. Does that get your point?
One more.
I want to make sure we address it.
Okay.
Okay, so look at on the left where it says allowed uses. And if you look at medical service clinic and you look at C one BP permitted. Medical services, hospital, CUP, offices, processing development permitted. Offices, business administration, professional permitted, offices, re- real estate permitted. Personal services, repair services, et cetera, et cetera, but to answer your question around. Business professional and the reason we have business professional, the C one does the same thing, it it overlaps the BP. And it actually expands some of the current usage. But it doesn't restrict any sort of medical issues or professional services. Does that make sense?
It was not my position that it prohibited medical uses. But rather that it opened it up for a lot of other uses that a C one would get. Um, if you go back to page four of six, see all the P's underneath C one.
Yep.
And there are dashes underneath BP.
Yep.
So this could be a whole lot of new uses and that's all fine, I mean, at one level. On the other hand, it also means that uh. It's it's not being sort of carved out as being a a business professional zone. Where you can expect a certain category of activities.
But it doesn't exclude it.
Didn't say it did.
Yeah.
Didn't say it did.
Yeah, so and and the reason I wanted to call that out is if we think about, okay, if we're doing some sort of modernization using the C one. We're looking at BP is kind of, okay, this this made sense for just business professional, but. If we want to expand and open up economic opportunities throughout our town, which we all do. C one makes more sense, BP is very restrictive, you can only, it looks like it's very limited to some of the things that you can do.
Well, if I, and if I were, if I were the owner of the property, I was a developer. I was gonna sell that property and make the most amount of money I could, of course, I want to have.
C one.
I want C one, absolutely, and and so I take the attitude of let's take. Everything we have in here and turn it into C one, cause it's got the broadest, it's got the broadest use, but is that what we want? Is that what we want in the community?
I mean, like, it it doesn't restrict a medical facility from going in there if a medical facility is needed.
But it could lower the odds.
See, it's suddenly competing with a whole lot of businesses that it wouldn't otherwise compete with, but. I think this horse is dead, I didn't make it to the veterinary hospital, cause it's.
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
If if we went the route of the expanded CUP. Does that stop at the planning commission or does that also have to go on?
That that stops at the planning commission. And the CUP would be. Expanding to the convenience store and so it would uh. I'm sorry?
Only two CUPs.
Well.
One expansion, one.
I think it would be expanding the existing CUP to include.
Okay.
The convenience store and then the convenience store. Just one moment, please.
Convenience and liquor stores.
Right, the sale of alcohol, um. Yes, that that would also be included in in the language for the CUP.
One thing I wanted to call out too is, I know the facility, I know you guys just came up, so I'll give you a minute to talk. Um, we also need to open it up to public comment, but one thing I wanted to call out, if you look at. The uses in the C one, auto repair and maintenance, I know the facility allows for auto repair and maintenance today. That's not allowed in the BP, but it is allowed in the C one.
With the CUP.
With the CUP, but the the shop does allow for, I mean, it's got a garage.
Right, it does, um.
Right, so in nineteen ninety-six, the shop was there as as well.
Yeah.
So the the nineteen ninety-six CUP approval is for the, is is for the gas station and and shop.
But it's just another reason it's non-conforming in the BP, if that makes sense, yeah.
That's correct.
May I?
Go ahead.
Just just because we're talking about non-conformity, more specifically the con- the convenience store. So I, the the section code even looking at attachment C, uh, cites um Ojai Municipal Code ten dash two one seven one oh. What, um, as a service station and it typically includes accessory uses such as snack shops or convenience stores. But if all, only if those uses are incidental and subordinate to the principal use. Look, even though it does not, even though that section doesn't appear to provide a full standalone definition. Uh, they most, including Ojai, most cities rely on Article ten dash two point three zero zero definitions. And where service station means a retail business primarily engaged in the sale of motor fuels. And may include auto repair, car washes and accessory retail sales such as packaged snacks, beverages, tobacco and automotive goods. The only reason I'm bringing it up is that the whole, the the discussion so far has been geared on the fact that that the snack shop is a. Uh, non-conforming use and so it would my, our position that the snack shop is conforming due. Based on the CUP that we have currently exist, that's existing and on that grounds, I'm hoping that that may change your. Thoughts as to getting a conditional use permit, because when we talk about zoning, this is a long process. Why, our current needs is this, that there is a, there's a license, it's an escrow, it's not going to be there for long. And so we're trying to see if there's any way to help the business and so if. It's gonna take a year to zone, I, there's no real need for this business to potentially go through the zoning.
Is there a time? Is there, like? How long is the escrow open for, what's the timing on that, is the clock running?
Now, we have, it it's been thirty days in escrow.
But.
And we just waiting for the city to prove it.
Well, it's gonna take a lot longer than thirty days, however, we've, we're in communication with the owner of it. And they're waiting to wait, but not a year or so, it's it's just, it really comes down to, again, the times, the. Just being able to, including with the snacks to to, if somebody comes in and says, hey, I want a beer or wine. Um, that they can service those clients, those customers as well, instead of saying, hey, go to Von's. You know, don't grab all your snacks, go, you know, go to one stop shop somewhere else across the street or whatnot. Another thing to point out is that this bit, this gas station is the only gas station on the highway. Otherwise, if you just want to go get gas, you're gonna have to go downtown sometimes and so. Again, I'm not trying to, you know, appealing to you guys sense of that this is a, this is a, this is a family, this is a business, it's been there for decades. You know, and so, you know, we're not asking for too much, we're hoping that a conditional use.
Yeah, we're we're trying to make it work for you guys, um, question, um, how long would the rezoning process take, would that be?
Uh, you're probably looking at somewhere in between four and six months, it could be longer. Um, and the reason why is a lot of times we start teasing out the reasons and rationale for what we're looking at here. Pretty straightforward with this one, but there are, there have been ones that have come before this body and city council that were more complex. And those took over a year to process, um, a lot of back and forth, educational, it seems like. We've been in conversation with with these individuals for the last three years and they've. They've decided to move forward with what we're looking at here tonight as a concept, are there other options?
Sure.
Yes, this is the option that we've provided to them move forward, could the CUP option be on the table, certainly.
Okay.
Um, probably the cleanest route in order to get it into conformance, which really the zoning code. Looks to that as the first and foremost thing to do.
Makes the most sense, well, um, I would like to keep both options on the table as we move forward and look to solutions going, cause I I know this is just a. Concept.
From a concept review standpoint, just know that you're not taking a vote, it's important that we hear the comments tonight. Um, from each of you and I think we've done that so far, so we're moving in the right direction.
Let me ask you a question, not tonight, but could this body at a subsequent meeting? Um, grant a CUP and then.
Yes.
There's no, there's no six month wait and uncertainty associated with it.
No grant to city council.
We would need to look at the city's ability to, we would need to confirm that we can make the findings. For what they're proposing to what the code says, so I think staff would need to go through that exercise of. Whether or not that was possible.
Will we have to do a hearing on that CUP, like, like a public hearing before we then have a subsequent meeting with a vote?
No, no.
No.
If they, if if they applied, I'm sorry.
No, you.
If the applicant, I'm gonna use two, um, if the, if the applicant were to apply for a conditional use permit. Staff would review it and see about making the findings and then present. Um, present it to the planning commission and you would make a determination.
Okay.
Um, and we try to work with applicants for every project.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and it's really our goal to come forward with a recommendation of approval and if we don't feel that we can do that. We work with the applicant prior to coming to uh to a hearing.
You guys do a great job, appreciate it. Um, thank you guys, anything else?
No, just, I guess I very much appreciate your feedback and I just, um. Just trying to understand what path to take, so it's just to be clear, it's if we apply for the CUP. Um, we'd have to hear on it and, but I want to know what, if you, if you guys support the idea or whether it's, you know, what's. Or whether you're, you would be more supportive to a zoning change with that.
I'll tell you how I feel, I'm against like a CUP, but I'm one of like five bodies on this. I'm more for the zoning, brings in conformance, washes our hands clean of all of this, I I don't want to reward. You know, uh, business owners or residents who are in non-conformance with like out CUP in the future, I think it sets a bad precedence. That's my own personal opinion as a commissioner, I I'm curious if they file for the CUP. Can you still bring both options to the table for one hearing for us to decide one way or the other as a governing body? Or can we, do we really, can we only just bring one at a time?
The applicant needs to have a a specific request and that we will bring forward to you. Um, with findings that we feel we can make or not.
This is tough, you have a a a time bar on this escrow where you might miss out on this liquor permit. Or out beer and wine, um, at the same time trying to think long term for the city of Ojai and what's best. But it's fundamentally fair, this is a tough one for me on.
Totally, I'm I'm right there with you, I mean, I'm I'm leaning towards, you know, doing the zone, but I am sensitive to the time, time limit or the time restraint that you guys are looking at. Um, I do want to caution though, um, you know, selling beer and and alcohol isn't always a silver bullet. We've seen it happen before in the past where we've opened up additional licenses and that the the business did not make it, so.
Do you guys, do either of you have opinions on the route that you would be more favorable on so that the applicant can make a decision about what? They want to stay with or?
Of course.
Yeah, and and so I I will say that, um, from a planning commission and looking at what benefits Ojai. Doing the zone change makes the most sense, um, so I I like that option, but I'm also sensitive about time, so if we can come to a solution. Where we can do something like that and the time limit is reduced, that would be ideal.
What about, um, requiring a expiration date on the alcohol use? So give them a period of time to operate with the CUP for alcohol.
Secure the license?
So and so they can secure the license in the immediate future, we can't require them in the CUP to come into compliance, cause that. And then.
Future, we would do the zone change.
And then that would, that would buy them some time to be able to go through the lengthier process of the zone change.
I think that would be, you know, long term, that makes the most sense, I think, and that would.
So they, that would require that you'd have to do both applications if you took that pathway and the commission was open to that, but. That might be a solution.
I also think the C one is gonna benefit you in the long term, you'll have more options as far as what you can do with that use. So it's just something to consider, but I like that idea.
I've, I've been, um, lean, I I agree with both Robert and John in terms of. Um, the citywide approach, you, long term for the city, this is a better thing to do. The zone, clean up the zone situation, on the other hand. I, I think that if it destroys their chance to um obtain this license. Then we have really done a disservice, so. I would like to see them come for the CUP expansion and. Eventually this body should address the zoning situation. This all assumes that you can make the findings that would support the expansion, if not, well. If you can't find, do the findings, then then we really have no choice but to go to the zoning.
And we may create a longer timeline.
To you, Mara?
Yes, and well, Mara corrected me also, it, the the use isn't just for alcohol, it's for a convenience store that has been.
Right.
But didn't we just hear that that was already in the definition, so.
I'm just correcting that, Mara, Mara corrected me, I just want to make sure.
Now, your, your, your suggestion of doing the CUP is a temporary solution with a longer term.
Mm-hmm.
With the two applications, I mean, if that's a viable route, I think that would, I think that would solve the issue, cause then they would be able to secure. Their, uh, the alcohol license.
I want to hear from Commissioner Bennett, how do you feel about the best path forward in the in the near term?
Um, I am, uh, leaning towards the the applicant's needs. Meaning the shortest term possible so they don't lose the opportunity they have currently to acquire. The alcohol license.
Sure.
And get into the mainstream of gas stations today, which involve a. Com- fairly comprehensive, um, convenience store attached to them. Um, in particular, I think this is urgent because of the electrification of vehicles. And the fact that they have, they have a shrinking number of 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 options there and I. You know, and that isn't necessarily the the bullet, I mean, you know, serving alcohol or selling alcohol may not. Solve the problem, but we do, we do run a process which takes quite a bit of time. It it has the same endpoint, no matter what you do in terms of you're permitting the use that they're they're seeking. Um, I don't hear anybody saying, well, we shouldn't do it because it's across the street from a school, cause you've got. Um, I don't hear anybody saying, well, we shouldn't do it because it's across the street from a school, cause you've got both a grocery store and a liquor store, you know?
They've passed the ABCs, you know?
Exactly, all that. So I, you know, I don't, I, I just think that this is where, as a community, I mean, as a, as a service to the community, the commission should cut this thing as short for them as possible. The idea of saying, alright, you, you, we're gonna grant you a CUP and you have to then make a, a second application. I have no idea what's entailed in that in terms of cost of doing it.
Sure.
Doing different processes and what fees are and.
And why would they do that? They've gotten everything that they want at that point, there's not necessary for them.
Right. I, and I think, by the way, it's one of the reasons there are CUPs, cause you know, typically changing zoning is a more challenging process than a CUP. And I know it's, it's messy to have a bunch of, a bunch of uses going on in zones where they're not permitted and they've got a CUP.
Yeah.
Um, and I, I too would love to clean up all of that and, and conduct business where zoning is the highest and most important element. And so to the extent that we can change zoning and then allow and encourage, it's not only just allowing, but encouraging uh, the development in a certain direction as opposed to another direction. That's, that's always, I think, better. But, uh, I, I, in this instance, I think a small, these small businesses, you know, I don't, I don't like to may have them leave feeling they've been jerked around and, you know, so. Uh, I would in this instance, you know, say, this is one where the end justifies whichever means we choose.
Did you guys?
There are, we, we lean in two, two directions. Just wanted to remind you, there's a fifth person who's not here. And we don't know where he would be coming from.
Uh, did you guys get your answers?
So I, I would like to add something before.
Clear as mud.
Well, I don't know. Before you finish, I just, I want to make sure that you have all the information that I have to give you, okay? And so through research prior, in order to present this to you tonight, the 1996 conditional use permit was specifically for the, um, the auto shop to include gas. It was ver, it did not include the, uh, convenience store. So, um, the, the convenience store would be an expansion. It is not, it is not permitted as an ancillary use. It was specific in that conditional use permit. So I, I wanted to make sure that was clear. And so a CUP would be for the convenience store. Um, cause it's, it sounded like, um, Commissioner Murphy heard differently from the applicant and, and that's, that's.
Thank you.
Okay, so, and then, and also I just want to let you know that, um, the conditional use permit, well, two, two things. One, something that Commissioner Bennett asked, and I, I didn't answer it properly, is that through the CUP, you can limit or control through conditions, the type of, or the amount of alcohol that's sold. You can require an entire six-pack as opposed to singles.
Singles.
So that was, that was a question that you asked. Um, just in general, a CUP, um, offers, provides the opportunity for conditions, for control, where a zone change opens it up, um, to less control. Cause if you don't need a CUP for something, then you, you can't condition it the same way, right? Um, and that's, uh, that's why it's conditional. So, I think.
The zone, the zone change would also provide consistency with.
So, the zo, the zoning, yeah, so there's, it's, you have this balance going on, right? So really the, when, when a planner looks at something like this, immediately we liquor chops and we're like, mm, zone change makes the most sense. Like immediately, let's get into conformance. Code talks about it, general plan talks about it, consistency, let's find that consistency. Obvious. And then CUPs creep in and they're like, hey, you could do this on a Tuesday, as long as there's conditions and findings. And it's like, oh, okay, okay. So it provides the commission and the community with, um, some control. Obviously.
Options.
Yes, so I think those are the two. So, is either one better than the other? Probably not. Each of them provides a process. One process that lands here with the CUP and doesn't go anywhere else unless it's appealed to city council. The second one, which is the zone change, you're the recommendation body, and then the final decision is city council.
How long would it take to do the CUP findings, get it in front of us, to make a decision? We've heard four to six months? For the ordinance potentially?
So it starts with an application, and then once an application is submitted, um, staff has 30 days to deem it complete for processing. And so that's really on the applicant. If that, if the application is, is perfect, then, then, then we don't have to ask for more information, which then gives us another 30 days. So, but I like to use the rule of thumb, um, 30 to nine, to 90 days. Once it's complete, they should be here within two months.
Yeah.
So, 30 to 90 days.
So I've asked the commission for all of our opinions, and it's, it's clear as mud, but now you have all the information for you to make the decision as the applicant.
So, and, and the applicant, um, can review the, the findings that have to be made for, for both the conditional use permit and for the, um, zone change because, geez, um, because they're provided in the code. So, the attorney just showed me something, so just a second.
Wait, it gets better? Or worse?
More, more wrinkles, more wrinkles.
No, you're, you're fine.
The code, within the, no, uh, within the staff report, it describes how there's a section of the code that allows the planning commission to, um, to approve a use, uh, that, through a CUP that is not permitted, that has that line through it.
You're right, you're right, my apologies.
Right. Um, as long as they can make the findings. And the biggest thing, I think, or one of the things, is that the use is not, um, more detrimental than the, than the uses that are already allowed in that zone.
Right.
So if you take that list and it's like, okay, is a convenience store more disruptive perhaps than all the other uses that are allowed? And so, the planning commission, well, staff would have to make that finding and present it to the planning commission, and then you would be the final decision.
Right, okay.
Apology, thank you.
No, no problem. Okay, so, you guys feel okay?
Yes. I just, I, I, I understand everyone else's position, um, but I'm trying to make sure, just to pin down, um, your, 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 what you would think to do, your suggestion. Like, I hear from, 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 I hear zone. Um, Maura, what about you?
Well, I feel that it's, I'm Maura. It's not, I, I feel that it's really not appropriate for me to give you my opinion, however. However, I would like you to, um, to familiarize yourself with the findings.
Yes.
Those findings are something that I'm gonna have to go through and see if we feel as staff can, can make those as a department, um, make those findings to present them to the planning commission. And if we don't feel like we can make them, we'll, we'll let you know. Um, those aren't really something that can be, can be worked with. Um, it's not like you can change the design, you know, of, of which, if, but, so it's really, it's, but I think that's really important. And so I'm happy to talk about them with you. I'm happy to provide them to you via email, um, if you want to reach out to me, but that's what I think is on your plate.
First step on our end, uh, if it's at least would be considered, I think, uh, to, to seek a variance, a CUP immediately. And then we can talk later about the, to submit also how you've recommended potentially changing. Because, you know, times are changing, right? Maybe he wants to put electric, you know, chargers, you know, who knows? But for now, this is, this is, this is their goal. It's not, we're not, you know, for zoning, we're not asking to add or change or do anything. We're just asking to put an item in this next, you know, in the convenience store. Well, also to conform to use now, right? So, thank you very much for your time, and this has been.
Yeah, I, I would recommend, you know, make sure you work with Maura, look at both options very carefully.
Yeah.
Uh, before you make your choice on which one you want to do.
Don't forget about, um, the attorney's suggestion of, or, uh, the possibility of putting an expiration date on, on the CUP.
This is very important for you.
To move it toward the zoning change.
The applicant has moved down with this process for a zoning change. If they file a CUP and then the findings cannot be made, do they have to restart the ordinance piece and have it come back for a public discussion? And restart the whole procedure of what we're doing right now?
Yes, they would be applying, well, they would be applying for, if, if we came forward with a conditional use permit request and you denied that, and then they chose to go through the zone change route, then they would have to submit another, another application and come before you again, and you would make a recommendation to the city council.
But what if the planning department can't find the findings?
Then we would be recommending denial.
Correct, so I just want you to know.
If they chose to come forward with that.
If you chose to go forward with the CUP and the findings are not met and it is denied, you'll have to restart this whole process again, which would add even more time on top, so.
But Robert?
Simultaneously, can we do two applications simultaneously?
Can't they just discuss the findings and come to some sort of agreement without any formal?
So they, they would know.
You were the decision maker.
Right.
That's, that's the wrinkle in the whole thing.
Right, they would know that, that what our recommendation would be before we got here.
Okay.
But whether we recommend approval or denial, you're the deciding, you're the authority.
Okay, then, yeah, I'm just clarifying and, great. Great.
I see.
Thank you.
Okay.
We have.
Thank you guys.
We have never sent anybody away without much confusion.
Um, I did, yeah, we got, we got options. You guys have more options now than you did before, which is a good thing.
I agree, I agree with that, I really appreciate it, guys.
And again, work with staff to make sure you understand clearly both options, so you know which way to go. Um, I did want to open it up for public comment. I don't know if we have any, I didn't receive any cards, but I, yeah, Sheri, do we have anybody online?
No.
Okay, alright, alright, then we'll move on.
Now we can open it up for this one.
Alright, thank you guys, have a good night.
Good night.
Can we take a?
Yeah, let's, uh, let's take a quick break.
No one's getting stung yet.
We'll take the win.
I think we're okay. Yes. I am leading this one. It is me. It is I. Okay. So, uh, good evening, commissioners. This is a discussion. I hope you've done your homework. You've read it cover to cover. And, uh, I just want to give you some, some kind of some, like a flashback to how we've arrived at what we have before us tonight for a discussion piece. You know, this, this whole conversation started because the housing element demanded it, um, through one of our programs, program fifteen. So fifteen requires us to have objective design standards, um, in place. However, those objective design standards are supposed to be in place by the end of last year. Um, through our annual progress report, I was able to convince HCD that we are working and progressing towards objective design standards. So we're still in good graces. Our APR has been accepted by HCD, so we're okay. Um, there's no red flags there. Still, we've got to move forward and get something on the books here. Um, what, uh, looking back at the notes from the last time this was brought forward, there was a couple of things that I, I, I noticed, and I think we've hit some of those pieces. And I want to hear from you, um, in terms of how close we are to the mark here tonight. The, the previous discussions took into account, um, potential options from other cities. Gilroy was one. Temecula was another. We've reached out to a couple of other communities, Santa Barbara, we've kind of been toying around with. Malibu has objective standards now. However, I'm not necessarily finding, um, that they're as helpful as I had hoped, mainly because they use the coastal commission as a part of their process. So theirs is a little bit different in terms of how it operates than what we would have here. Um, another is the city of, um, Port Wayneimi, which is a similar size. You know, it's, it's larger, obviously, but the, the other issue there is they are coastal community as well. So there's some, a slightly different wrinkle that goes along with them as well. What we have tonight is a Frankenstein approach to the standards, where we've taken, um, one city's standards, taken a look at it, realized that not all of them fit kind of the, the format of what Ojai is. So we've expanded that. And we've looked at some other cities, um, in Southern Calif, well, in California in general, because there's some cities in Northern California that we've borrowed some of those standards from. And to be fair, some of the design features that you're seeing here as well. Remember, and I think it was Attachment B that I included, that kind of gives the, the playbook by which we're supposed to stay within the boundaries for. Um, I had given a, an example that HCD had put together for, like a tool, toolkit of sorts. Highly, it was highly, um, critical and, and very in-depth. This, this approach still is using HCD's format, but it's using some professionals out there that have found success in these objective standards in other cities, um, throughout California. And because of that, you're seeing kind of the roadmap here by which to operate. And so for tonight, it's really a discussion in terms of what we're looking at here. And more importantly, I want to kind of stay within the boundaries of a statement that I'm going to make here. And it's, it's really how objective design standards fit. So it involves no personal or subjective judgment by a public official and are uniformly verifiable by a reference to an external and uniformal benchmark or criterion available and knowledgeable by both the development applicant or, or proponent and the public. So you're seeing the marriage there between the two? It's, it's extremely important that really what it boils down to is us having, um, numerical standards or options by which the applicant can draw from. So it's not discernible to say, well, we don't like that option. Really, we're kind of looking for something that's consistent with the community. And can't do that. It has to be specific and intentional. So with that, I open it up for discussion for tonight and, uh, we'll go from there.
And I would like to note in working with this, uh, with Lucas on this, we tried to start with our own code, uh, but to Commissioner Graham's point, uh, the subjectivity is real high in our own code. And it was such, it was such a tremendous undertaking to fix that portion that we've created, we created this draft for you.
Great.
Yeah. So, um, there are portions that are objective, but it, it was a tremendous undertaking.
So it is, sorry, please.
Do I understand you to say that you have looked at all these other cities' codes and come up with the idea that a twenty-foot minimum here for this driveway is the appropriate number? And if that doesn't work, does that mean that they go for a variance or what, what happens?
Yeah. So they meet that standard. That's the objective standard. If they don't meet those standards from an objective standpoint, then it no longer is objective. It becomes subjective.
No, I understand that. I, what, what I'm asking about is the process by which the applicant deals with this. He comes in, we're all looking at twenty feet. Okay. If for some reason his situation doesn't allow him to, uh, to have exactly twenty feet minimum, what is the process by which we go around it?
Okay. So let's, let's start with it from the standpoint. If I look at the very beginning here, applicability. What types of projects apply or fit the criteria by which this fits into? Generally, it's multifamily and mixed use, not single family, not manufacturing, not commercial exclusively. We're talking multifamily and mixed use. And.
Can I just, yeah, just ask a question? So we're not going to receive a similar packet to go through for commercial spaces? This is the only area where we need to call out the question of objective standards?
Correct. And it.
Ever?
My, the law, ever's not the right.
Right now is.
Answer the question.
It's, it's, it's for.
Affordable.
Protect Lucas. It's for affordable housing. If the commission so desires to make that recommendation to council, that is an effort that you could undertake. Uh, but what's legally required is for us to adopt these objective standards to allow for, um, multifamily properties.
To comply with the, the state laws of affordable.
Yeah, can I?
Regarding.
Can I just say that we've had affordable housing projects brought forward before us and we didn't have the teeth or the process by which they would follow? So it was, to the, to the applicant's credit, it was laughable simply because they knew they had kind of an open playbook by which to operate. And we had, we were very gummy in terms of the standards that we could apply. So to get to your point regarding the twenty-foot piece, I think it's important to understand from the, the format that this is going to be living under. This isn't going to be living under a, a project that doesn't have some sort of a, um, housing benefit to the community, meaning affordability. And with affordability comes these concessions and these waivers. So to your, to your point regarding some of these things potentially fitting into another bucket, it could. So are they going to be held, you're asking me, like, is this, are they going to be held to this, to this standard? Yes. Until they come forward saying, this is a concession and here's why.
Okay.
So they have to bring forward that argument. It's like no different than what we were just talking about five minutes ago. The, the difference, though, is, is the, the use that's coming forward. That's the main, that's the main thing. So just understand that this only fits within these four pieces. The multifamily, the mixed use, specific types of residential developments, specific types of qualifying ministerial review, um, projects that fit under SB three thirty, SB nine, AB twenty eleven, and SB six. While that sounds like a mouth, mouthful, those are all adopted and are currently in place today.
Right.
I mean, we're getting SB nine applications, which are basically subdividing, um, residences, lots without having to go through any sort of formal hearing. So it's a lot split, basically.
You've done some?
I'm, I'm sorry. Say that again. We are getting, what did you say?
Yeah, we're getting SB nine applications in. We've, we've processed a couple already.
Applications.
Yes.
There are lot splits.
Lot splits.
Lot splits.
This is a new law that went into effect like January first, twenty twenty-four?
Hmm.
Or was it this year?
No, like twenty twenty-one, I think.
Oh.
It's been a while.
Yeah, you can split a lot.
Right.
Yeah. I have a question about the bicycle, long-term bike storage.
Which go to that page.
Yes.
That's.
Page sixteen, it starts, continues on seventeen and eighteen.
Yeah, bicycle parking, which is, uh, subset H. Okay.
Why? Uh, elaborate. Um, is this required under state law? What I was looking up is something like Title fourteen or something of like state code. Um, requires bike parking? I'm just curious, long-term bike storage? Do we have to legally have this under California state law?
To my knowledge, no, but we can double check. The degree of storage that we put in here, I think, was in response to, um, prior interest by this commission
Correct.
in facilitating bicycles as transportation.
Because I, I understand providing storage space for, you know, uh, multifamily, uh, units. But requiring a separate bicycle storage may make it more difficult for, you know, us to get affordable housing in the valley if we're requiring one for every, you know, unit. And then that ends up stacking on top of each other and limiting the amount of like housing that you can build or parking spaces.
I don't think it's one for every unit, but it is, I, it is something that you could, I know other cities don't have it.
B, uh, III, multifamily residential mixed-use buil, buildings shall provide one long-term.
Unit, apologies.
Yeah, yeah. That, that's where I'm, where I'm going is this specific line.
Well, that's, it's a standard that you could change, right? So you could make it one per every six dwelling units, right? You could lower the standard. You could remove long-term bike storage altogether.
Do we, do we have like a, objective standards for storage space for each dwelling unit? Because I'm, I'm wondering if we're having to double up here, long-term bike parking and storage space or?
I don't remember seeing storage space in here as an, as an option, no.
I can.
It didn't, it didn't go into that granular detail that you're talking about.
Yes.
Really, this, this is kind of something that's separate, but still is accounting for each of those units. And I would say there is a city that actually is applying this currently, and this is the city of Los Gatos, which is in Northern California, um, kind of south of San Jose. So, I mean, the city's five, three, three to five times the size of what we've got here, but it has very similar qualities to what Ojai is as well. Um, and not only that, but a lot of the, with affordable housing, the question of bicycle parking, bicycle charging has come up one hundred percent of the time. I can't think of a time where we haven't had that conversation.
Unity will bring it up.
Having, well, the community will bring it up for obvious reasons. Having this in here, I think, makes a lot of sense. Maybe the way in which it's worded is a little bit more restrictive than maybe we, we feel comfortable with. I think we can pull some of that back. Absolutely.
Um, I just want to, uh, before we jump into this, just for clarity sake, um, this is regarding multifamily, multi-use, objective standards for affordable housing projects. So if somebody comes.
For qualifying affordable housing projects.
Somebody comes before this body, a developer, and they want to develop a mixed-use housing project that's not affordable, these do not apply.
We use subject, we use subjective, not objective.
We currently have in our code.
Correct.
Now this, once we adopt this, somebody comes forward with an affordable housing project, this gets ministerial review. It does not come before us. We have no say in this anymore. We're outlining the guardrails right now. Once those guardrails are adopted, these projects won't go before us. Correct? They'll be ministerial.
Incorrect. It would be ministerial in terms of us having, you're, you're providing the teeth now.
Mm-hmm.
We didn't have the teeth before.
Got it. Okay.
We're providing the teeth now to say, you shall do this.
You shall do this. Got it. Okay. So that.
Unless, to your point, Commissioner Murphy earlier, unless they come up with some sort of concession, because they have that because of what they're providing from an affordability standpoint.
Now, the second question, we have some affordable housing projects in the works. Do these apply once they're adopted to those projects?
I don't know.
This is only for new ones.
Oh, you're talking about ones that have been, um, approved?
It says.
They do not.
I want to call out the affordable housing threshold is twenty percent, which is like much higher than what we're getting for some of these affordable housing projects. We're coming in around maybe like ten to fifteen percent. Some qualify, but, um, that percentage might be a little high if we're trying to apply some of these standards. Otherwise, they're non-qualifying and then they, these standards don't apply to them. And so I'm curious why this is applying to affordable housing projects rather than like all housing developments or like multifamily housing developments or mixed-use developments? Why are we singling out affordable housing ones that would provide a greater percentage of affordable housing? This almost seems like it's, um, a disincentive to build more affordable housing.
So you could recommend that change? The minimum expectation is that we do it for affordable housing. There's nothing preventing you from applying. Well, politically, there may be things preventing you from doing that, but, um, from a legal standpoint, there's nothing preventing you from applying a standard across the board for multifamily.
Santa Barbara has it for their entire community.
Yeah. So you could change the requirements to have it applied to all multifamily.
Great.
It's, it's really a, it, you're, you're granting the person who, the developer who is developing a, you know, a project which has an affordable housing component to it, a way to have a by right review that is dealing with objective standards as opposed to, um, having to come before this bo, this body where subjective standards can be used. So it, it sort of says, all right, well, if you're willing to conform to this, uh, this objective percentage, whether it's ten percent or twenty percent, you, you get, you get to go in this lane. And by the way, here, everything's prescribed, so you can hand a book to your, your architect and say.
And HCD said we can't use subjective standards at all. So the developer would just be like, well, there are no standards. I can do whatever the hell I want until we have this.
Thank you, J, our commissioner, about it. That helps fill the gaps of my knowledge of why we would have some heightened standards for affordable, um, housing developments. Um, I still think it should be low. Okay. Thank you. I would like to explore that, though. Okay, thank you. I would like to explore that though. Like what are the incentives and what are the disincentives of lowering the percentage? Are we doing a service to the community by forcing them to comply with the objective design standards? At a lower affordable housing percentage? Or are we actually hurting the community? Cause then they can circumvent public hearing. I don't know.
I, yeah, I'm, I'm confused.
Well, I think, I think that goes back to the point of like, if you have a recipe of what you're, have to follow and there's no discretion. It gives you a clear path forward, right? I think you said that. This is what we expect the development to look like. You don't have to go through the, um.
Multi-layered process of public hearings.
Yes, public, right? It, it's, it is a faster track to getting it accomplished.
Um, that's what the state wants.
Yes, that is what the state wants.
Sure. And then do we have to like, is this a checklist? Is this a scorecard? Do you have to hit like five out of seven? Or is it, you have to comply with every single one of the objective design standards?
Yeah, you have to comply with it or, um, variance.
Only if there's a list that says comply with five of seven of these, of, from this list.
Yeah, that, that's.
You got certain points for the size of your, your trees. So if you had a forty-eight inch box, you.
What? Before, but hang on one second, before we jump into getting through the details. On attachment A one of nineteen, uh, section two residential development, at least twenty percent. I know we're just talking about that. I'm just a little bit, can you provide a little clarity? It says, on a vacant parcel that was used in the city's previous, previous two housing element site. Inventories to accommodate lower income or on a non-vanquished parcel that was issued to the city's previous housing element site. So I'm confused on that because are we using like, we're not using our current housing element site inventories? We're using like a historical, like how far back? We're going back two years?
Well, it's two cycles, so go back as far as, cause we're in the six, we're in the sixth housing cycle, so it would go back sixteen years. But to be fair, to be fair, two cycles ago, we actually merged two cycles together because we were behind. But guess what? We weren't the only city. About every, every other city was behind, um, in terms of the, the cycle. So cycle four really molded itself, blended itself into cycle five before we even got to, to the most current one, which is cycle six.
Okay. So we're saying it not only qualifies for existing housing element parcels. But also for the ones that were deemed in the past.
Correct. And we keep.
Do we have any of those?
We are required to keep a running list of vacant parcels. Um, and then. It's just basic information that we have for them. And it goes back two cycles. So.
Ever fall out of cycle? Like, do they ever say, hey, we, we did an SPLA overlay, overlay on this property, but it doesn't apply anymore?
Yes, they can fall off.
They can.
Yes.
Interesting.
However, if they fall off during this, during the cycle, then we have to re- allocate and re-account for. Um, for those lost units. So for instance, if we have an SPL overlay.
Right.
And it falls off like what we have here for three, which says sites that are rezoned to SPLA or SPL overlay.
Yeah.
Um, if one ends up getting developed, because an SPL overlay doesn't require you to do affordable housing. But it gives you that incentive to do affordable housing. They end up building to the base zone, whatever that happens to be. Then, um, that falls off and we have to find a new site that accounts for that lost unit count.
Okay, got it.
Going back to what you said, Robert, about the twenty percent, would, wouldn't it be beneficial to lower that? And include more affordable housing projects?
More market rate if you lower the percentage. You're gonna get more ra- market rate housing.
You disincentivize the developer to.
Do affordable.
To do affordable. And so I do see the argument of keeping it twenty percent. It is a lot. Hopefully it moves the needle to a faster process for them being able to build and they would choose to do that. I don't know the unit economics though of like housing development over twenty years and. Whether that one market rate unit that's replaced with affordable makes or breaks a project. That's why I'm like wishy-washy on what the best approach is.
I know who to ask about.
Can I give you an example? Uh, just a fun little example from a zoning, um, standpoint and a applicability standpoint. So for instance, uh, let's say for instance, there's a site that is an SPL overlay site. And they come in and they claim that they want to do the twenty percent. And that they say, oh, we're gonna do lower income households on this site at the density that it talks about. And they're, they're working through the density bonus piece. The SP overlay, SPL overlay has a minimum thirty-five percent threshold for affordable housing. So this section talks about the more restrictive objective provisions apply. So guess which one applies? Thirty-five percent.
Under this existing language.
And they still have to, they still are following the objective design standards, but it's not a twenty percent threshold. We say, it's thirty-five actually. That's your floor now.
Right. Do we have a map of our current, uh, overlays?
I don't have that readily available. I can't access, sorry, I can't access our, our folders or else I would show you. There was a, there was a map that I showed this commission when we were going through the housing element. Yeah. I think the three of you have seen it, but I don't think Commissioner Graham has seen that one.
I lack the knowledge to be able to really dive into. It's twenty feet away from something the right way or three feet high on a shrub to be able to prevent like, you know, the, uh. High beam glare, right? Of a, a car passing by a residential development. Um, I'm more interested in like the percentages and how people qualify for this. Do we have anything on this specifics?
We do. For, uh, qualifying for affordable housing, I think there's.
Also, I mean, like on the specific design standards.
Oh, 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 oh. I think you guys borrowed from other cities that are doing this, right?
We did, and we did our best to check it against what's actually in our code to make sure that we weren't proposing something that was crazy.
Sure.
Right.
Yeah, I'm, I'm.
Like to the point, the last time this came up, there was a bunch of lighting standards.
Mm-hmm.
And we were able to find the lighting standards that we have were objective, so we just applied those, right? Because, uh, the lighting standards in the first draft that came forward were more for a city. And didn't really take into consideration the, um, what's the word I'm looking for? Dark sky.
Good old dark sky.
Right? And so it had a lot of security lights.
Yeah.
Right? And that kind of, um, energy, which is not very Ojai, right? So we have adapted this to the extent that we could to what the current standards are, are pretty close to it.
Now, if there's something else in the Ojai code that is more restrictive than these objective design guidelines. Which will apply?
It depends on the way that the section was written. This is a universe, right? It, well, cause some of them refer back to other sections where we were able to do that, we did. Um, but where the section is pretty clear that here's the universe of rules. Those are the rules that apply to these projects.
Okay. But, but from a zoning standpoint, density standpoint, if it's in the SPLA lower, overlay, it qualifies for affordable housing. Then those state laws apply, right? And then HCD said you can apply standards, but they have to be objective standards.
Correct.
You can't use your subjective standards that you have in your current code. Yeah.
And I, to the point about, you know, the other development standard, that is an effort that we could go through separately, right? So you could adopt these standards and then I think we learned today that our code probably needs some help.
A little revision here and there.
And you have a volunteer.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be fun to, to work with you and stat, like I would personally enjoy that. Um, so what about parking? Because these are objective standards. Can we put in objective standards that supersede some of these other outs?
Likely not, uh, because once, once the density bonus applies. They use the subsection P of sixty-five, nine, one, five and sub- subsection P has some fairly. Helpful to the developer, but not helpful to the community standards.
Yeah, it, we, we discussed that, right? At like the last, uh, meeting. And so like, you have, we have one situation where the state is saying, hey, if you do this. Then they, they have to follow your objective design standards. And then you have another state law that's saying, well, actually if they do this, then they get these types of like concessions. So I'm curious between those two, which one takes precedent? If you have conflicting statements, like your objective sign standard say, has to be a single parking space for every unit. But then, you know, there's concessions in like another state law.
Right. So we have the concession piece built in, but then as we have the concession piece and so. We also have, so if you look at C. Consistency with the objective standards. On that second page of C, the last sentence says, if there are any conflict. If there is any conflict, uh, it needs to be rewritten a little bit better.
If there's any conflict.
Any conflict, sorry. That's my Midwest right there. Between these objective standards and other city or state requirements, the more restrictive objective provisions. Applicable to the project shall apply.
Can we change that? And this is like truly for the lawyer, like, can we change that to say these objective standards will apply? Because speaking as a lawyer, that's ambiguous. Then you go back and forth about what is a more restrictive standard based on the two different bodies of law. I'd rather be more prescriptive here and say, if there's a conflict between, you know, these standards and state and local law. These objective standards will apply.
I would feel more comfortable doing that if we went through an effort to reconcile. What was more restrictive and being clear about that. The problem also with removing that section. Is the state law is moving faster than we can keep up. And so when the provisions change its state law, it triggers a new ordinance where like, if the state. Like there was a period of time where there, it was like ten, it, it feels like ten ADU ordinances. And they're still coming down the pipe, right? Obviously, that's not what we're talking about here, but that, those standards are changing so frequently. We can't even catch our breath to, um, amend the current code to make it current and compliant with state law. Right? So we just default to state law standards.
Yeah.
As of right now.
To piggyback on that, density bonus law is the same way. We have, we have a provision. State, state, then we have a density bonus law in our code currently. We can't keep up with it because of the, the amendments that happen either on a six or twelve month basis at this point.
In my time working with Mara, I've had to resend information a few times because it's like, oh, sorry friend. More laws have passed since the time that we talked about this. And they're in the middle. It's, it's a lot. It's a lot to keep up with. Um, so maybe there's a path forward, but at least for the state law provision. Um, I would recommend keeping some kind of a catch-all to allow staff breathing room. And it's usually pretty clear. Um, and then where, at least the way that we've been doing it. Where things are not clear, um, between the muni code and state law, we just default to state law. Because by following the state law, we know we're not gonna get in trouble.
And by in trouble, you mean sued by?
Sued by developers. Um, we don't want to be on HCD's naughty list, right? There's, there's a few, there's a few different opportunities for us to quote unquote be in trouble.
So the other thing that I've noticed and it's over the years of, of doing this, I think you've probably seen this as well. A lot of times when we come up with regulations where we're like, oh, look, we've made it very unique. States paying attention to that now and they're like, oh, we'll just, we'll just adopt a state law that now supersedes what you're just talking about. So no longer can you apply that.
Yeah.
Had that happen probably half a dozen times since I've been here.
And I'm not asking the local community.
It's just, it's an interesting development.
Yes.
Yeah.
But that doesn't mean I don't want to fight for local control.
Well, I agree with that.
For example, for example, you know, staff, uh, council requested a letter that was on the agenda last night. About local control. It's a bill about, um, housing near transit and, right? And so we're participating in these things and one of the big issues is local control, right? So it, it's a very important issue, right? I feel like I'm participating, we're going down a rabbit hole, but. Right? It's this universe of things where everything is changing all of the time and we're just trying to keep up.
I'd like to propose that for every unit. Whether it's, you know, a residential unit or in a multi-use, uh, development. Even if it's a commercial unit, that there is one point five parking spaces per unit. And that, we also change this language in subsection C to say, if there's any conflict between these objective standards. And other city or state requirements, these objective standards shall apply. That may get us in trouble down the line, but it is a way for us to help alleviate that parking issue that we've been talking about. And so that is my recommendation as one person on the planning commission.
Now you just said one point five parking spaces per unit.
Per unit.
Now, I want to let you know that the way in which the parking standards work at the state level.
Yeah.
Is it's one parking space per bedroom.
Per bedroom?
Yes.
Oh, well.
So I, I.
What am I talking about?
I think there's an opportunity.
Yeah.
I think there's an oppor- so here's what, here's what I, here's what I recommend.
Yeah.
Is that I give you the menu of what those, that state law says and maybe we find the median and use that. And then use what you just said here. Do you think there's, do we run at a risk if we, if we move in?
What's our current parking code?
Well, here's, here's the struggle. Right now it's, it's identifying that, that we default to the parking, um, code. And then it, it states here, it's the stricter of the two standards. Uh, what do you think?
It's a triangle, right?
Okay, help me with the triangle then.
Because it's these standards, it's city standards. And then state standards.
With the concessions.
So which one, yeah, would the state, so if they qualify.
If, in this rock, paper, scissors, right? The state is the rock and we are always scissors, right?
Okay.
So they will, like if their parking standards, uh, we can. Being more restrictive in this space is, is, like, we have to be mindful of how we're being restrictive. Because pa- making parking so difficult or over, my brain is working faster than my words are. It seems like an opportunity to be clever and control these projects through parking. Right? Why ma- by making the parking so onerous, for instance, that it's not possible in a town that's four square miles. To accomplish the parking goal. Do you know what I mean?
What if it's not onerous, it's just practical?
It's practical. We need more parking.
Defensible is a good word, right? Reasonable. So I think what we could do is look at the standards, look at what's in our code now. And read the tea leaves on, you know, come up with a reasonable standard.
Yeah, let me.
Local control issue, I, I want to make this, this point clear. Like this local control issue is where the state trumps the local, right? But the state's the one actually telling us here, we need objective design standards. And if people follow that, then they get the fast pass to approval.
Right.
So this is where I think there's an opportunity for us to have more restrictive, a more defensible position when it comes to parking and our objective design standards. Where then if the question comes and says, well, state law says this, then that the argument is, well, state law also says this. And then they can figure it out between concessions, boni den- uh, bonus density or, you know, HCL says this. And we need these objective design standards and those trump. That's what I'm getting at.
I think there needs to be more of a conversation, Taylor, for us to sort through that. Cause I think there's a piece in the state law. I want to make sure that we have, cause I like where you're going with this. And I, I'm, I don't know that other cities have explored this. I think they've just defaulted to their standards. And if they don't, if they can't be met because it's too restrictive, too onerous, then you have the developers coming in and saying, ah, we're gonna just use state standards. And then you lose out on this.
Yeah.
But if you come in with a reasonable.
No, that's what I'm saying.
Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, I would love a reasonable, but what I don't want is an unreasonable standard to be given because of the bonus density or things like.
And I think we'll.
I think we're saying the same thing.
Are we?
Yes.
Okay, I want to make sure.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Reasonable.
Reasonable.
What I'm always, uh, afraid of, and I, I don't think the state cares, is that the state applies blanket policies to every city throughout California. They don't care if you're rural, you're downtown LA versus, you know, a tiny little town like Ojai or Gilroy or whatever. They'll apply the same standards through every city. So when they have these affordable housing projects, they're all like, okay, well, they gotta be five stories. They got, you don't need any parking at all because you're, you're. They got, you don't need any parking at all because you're, you're close to a bus station or whatever. And that might make sense in downtown Santa Barbara, downtown Ventura, or downtown LA, or downtown San Francisco, or San Jose, or uh, Port Wayne Eme, or, you know, some of these other cities. But we're, we're like a rural city. I mean, I know they classify us as urban because we're in Ventura County, which I think is totally bogus. We're like a little rural community. So some, making these parking requirements is a, is a practicable, practical, what did you say? It's a defense.
Defensible.
Defensible position for us because we need, our folks need to have cars. We don't have access to public transportation.
So let me look into that because I, I think there could be, I've just got to take a look at what the state law has and find some, find a reasonable kind of to a justifiable standpoint.
Well, and there is legislation that's passed, I think in the last year also where, that we need to look at where similar to the bill that went to council for an opposition letter last night where they find opportunities near, within half a mile of a major transit stop.
Yeah, does our trolley count as a major transit stop?
Yeah, or bus, bus station, right? Like, so we need to look into that because they keep chipping away at those provisions of you lose a lot of control um, for development within those areas. Like they're adding standards to it. So I think it's an effort that Lucas and I probably have to go through to be able to come back and provide you, I think, better data.
I have another one on attachment A, page seven of nineteen. We talk about building design, building form, massing and articulation. And I noticed, I didn't see anything in here related to thirty-five feet.
What, uh, page? I'm sorry. Seven.
Seven and nineteen. It does say that um, buildings can be two stories.
At the bottom.
The bottom, but I don't see anything related to height. It also says it can be three stories or more in height. And I know Ojai, we have a very strict rule around how tall buildings can be.
Thirty-five feet?
By number feet rather than stories.
Says thirty-five feet.
It does work.
No, I'm, I'm asking, what is our code saying?
I think the code is thirty-five.
We should, we should add in the, the code standard.
I agree.
Cause that, that's one of the um, main issues with that at transit piece is the state is saying, we, you can go up to five stories along a corridor that has a major transportation hub. And, you know.
I think it, the one that went last night was, it's seven.
Seven stories.
It's, it's, it's quite high.
So do we want seven stories all around Ojai Avenue? Probably not.
Just only on Ojai Avenue though.
We better not ever go against the, or, or fall out of compliance with our reading.
Correct, correct. Like that's why the compliance with these things and staying in good graces with HCD is really important.
While we're on that page, could you um, look at I, plant selection? Why are artificial plants not allowed?
Oh God, you really need to know?
Yeah, I want to know. I do. Because, because you've got no bark. No, no landscaping within five feet of a house now to pass the fire code. So if you have no, no um, live vegetation within five feet, you, you have a couple of choices. You can, and, and I have just recently pulled back bark mulch from my house and that was no small task. And wound up with some pipes that are quite ugly. And I plunked an artificial plant in front of that because I can't put a live plant in. And, and so when I read that that's not allowed, it's like, wow, why?
So you're allowed to do it.
I, I know, I'm allowed. But I, I want to know, is there some big reason here? I mean, I was told they'll melt. In a fire, they're gonna melt. They're not gonna burn.
No, I agree. It'll melt. I, I think when we were looking at this, because I looked at this and I was like, yeah, that makes sense. Here's why. Kind of, when you drive, when I ride my bike through the city and I go up and I go mountain biking and I come back down. I don't think I've ever seen an artificial plant, or at least one. I haven't driven by your house.
They're so ugly.
Sorry. Unless they're so, they're so amazing.
The one? You haven't seen it?
No, I haven't seen the one apparently. So
I, I know. Artificial is, is yuck. But on the other hand, you're gonna come into some situations where with these new fire codes.
Oh, you gotta be, what is it, five feet from the house? You can't have anything combustible. You gotta have all of that stuff.
Exactly. Well, no vegetation.
They're flammable, aren't they?
I mean, I think they, yeah.
I was told they're not.
Oh, okay.
It, are you saying that it's, you know, artificial plants are not with the character of the city?
Correct.
Yeah.
I agree. I don't want.
Alright. I appreciate, I appreciate the question.
I, I'm just saying, you're gonna have some interesting landscaping.
You're gonna put Astro perfume in the city grass?
Oh, cute.
So I would say if we can, if we can look for some areas where we can sprinkle in some of our objective design, you know, objective code in here, like, you know, the parking and the height of the buildings. Um, that would be wonderful.
There are some triggers. I, I agree the parking is definitely a trigger. It's one that we struggle with.
It always comes up. And, and you know, if I'm a builder and I have a clear guideline, a path saying, okay, well, if I do these and I provide this much parking, I'll have it ministerially approved. I won't have to go to some planning commission. I won't have to go to council. That's a big incentive.
You know what?
Save a lot of time.
The parking defaults to the current code.
But why do we, when we get these affordable housing projects, there are all these conditions for like, they don't have to have a parking. They don't have to have our code. Our code, parking doesn't qualify, doesn't, it's like means nothing.
Yeah, I'm confused. Are you, you're telling me that the way in which these, I mean, you're right, the way in which these objective standards are written as a draft defaults to Article fourteen.
Yes, which would, so, but there are state law standards that would apply before our local standards.
Right.
Right?
But I'm saying, and I think it's to Commissioner Graham's point, is if you find some sort of a balance between the two. And you come in with a reasonable standard. That standard itself may not necessarily be challenged.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm getting at.
Exactly.
That's, that's what he was getting at from the beginning. And if you, if you come in with something, you're like, you gotta use our current standards, which I mean, you've seen the exercises that I've gone through to show you what our standards are versus what state law is versus what they're proposing, right? So it's that three-tiered kind of system.
Right.
Here, what we're saying is, let's find that middle ground.
Yeah, yeah.
What does that middle ground look like that's reasonable? Not here with what our standards are currently. It's not here with what the state says. It's here.
I think it's definitely something that we can explore. I just, I think the part that I want to look at is where where are the left and right boundaries? Where there's not flexibility for a reasonable standard.
Okay.
Right?
Alright.
But I'm, I'm, I'm happy to roll up my sleeves and try.
Thank you.
Question around the architectural style. Where is that? Architectural features form entrance, architectural features. These multifamily buildings, are we gonna, do they?
Twelve?
Yeah, like twelve of nineteen, I believe. Do they uh, align with our, our, our design standards for like our downtown corridor? Or the east end of Ojai?
You're talking about the design guidelines?
Yes.
I have not looked at the design guidelines for consistency. So I can do that to, to look at that consistency piece. Really what I was, what we were looking at, we what we were looking at was um, the standards that exist within the, the design standards of our code, not necessarily the design standards of the guidelines.
Okay, that'd be great. Um, cause I know we want to apply those design guidelines for the west side as well, to expand that. Cause we don't.
Yeah, this is, this is citywide.
Yeah, and this will be citywide. So if, if I'm a developer and I'm coming in and I know that I have to, you know, I I can do it like um, Mission Revival, or I can do Craftsman. Then I know what my options are. But I think we don't really provide that sort of guidance in here.
Yeah. Good point.
Cool. Yeah, one thing I like about Mission Revival too with fire is it's just uh, those big stucco walls and, you know, the roofs are nice. It's almost like they knew that these areas burn.
You think?
Isn't that weird?
Wow, they were so smart back then.
So smart back then. Wow. That's, I think, all I had, but other than that, I mean, it's very, I would say, yeah, like vents, exhausts. All wall mounted vent. We need to make sure we're aligning with um, some of the fire hardening best practices. Putting, you know, the mesh vents on the houses.
On a, on a sidebar note, I am working with the building official to, to, to weakly leak some of that, some of that stuff.
Perfect.
He's already weak leaking saying, you know, we already have some of these standards that are above and beyond, which fit the mold of what we're talking about. I'm like, great. Why don't you tell me what those are? So we're working on that. We're, we're meeting monthly to work through that. So expect to easily hear from me or see something um, in the future regarding that.
For the, on page fifteen. Parking structures, garages and carports. I don't see that there's like a requirement to have these. Do we need to specifically state for this type of development? There must be, you know, a garage for every unit or for a certain number of units.
Covered space?
I, I don't know. Covered space, right?
Can we go as far as covered space? Because I know state law doesn't re- it just requires space. It doesn't say covered.
Yeah, I'm looking at the co- I'm, I'm hate to be the bearer of bad news, but the I'm not sure that there is the optimism of parking flexibility like we had hoped for.
State really doesn't like parking.
But here's my point.
No, they, well, parking's a way to control and prevent development.
Yeah, in big cities and urban film, but we're not, we're not an urban city.
Um, to mine, off the top of my head, I don't know of any, but we can definitely, it's something that we can look into.
But here's my point with, with this. You have strict requirements for the objective standards and the fast pass to approval. If you think the other state law applies and you get the bonus density, then you don't qualify for the objective standards and the fast pass. And so if you want to go with, you know, get, having fewer parking spaces, then you have to go before the planning commission. You have to go through the normal process. But if you comply with the objective standards, then you get the fast pass. So we're not saying, hey, we're circumventing state law and like these, you know, concessions. We're saying you just don't get the benefit of this other lane. You can still go through a normal, you know, review and have your project approved or denied. And that's where I think we have a defensible position. We're not saying no, we're saying, okay, stand in that line. From one, one lawyer to another, I'm just.
I think.
Oh, yeah, I think.
I think Taylor and I need to talk offline just to see the reason, like, what does reasonable mean and then versus what state law has um, in store for us and see, and see where that lands.
Yeah.
I still like the idea of, of a balance. And I, I'm sure that other cities have talked about that. I'm just not sure where it's landed.
Well, and so now, because it's been a minute, right, since we, like, we have been working on this for so long. When we were looking at the other cities, most of them don't have parking standards in they have aesthetic parking standards of landscaping and what does a covered space look like, what do garages look like? But most of them don't have parking standards in their actual objective um, design standard.
Let me ask you a question. Do you think if we were to go through the exercise of a covered space that we, we could, we could require like a percentage? Cause right now there's the, the option potentially for a percentage of those being substandard.
I would feel more comfortable if I looked at it when we weren't in this meeting.
Okay. It's a question, doesn't necessarily need an answer.
How the last item went, right? The, the, um yeah, I think it's something that we can look into. I'm just not, I'm feeling less and less confident about flexibility.
I, I like the idea of pushing the envelope, but I want to make sure that we have some legal ground to do that.
We should do that. If we're pushing the envelope, maybe like in a meeting farther away from this one.
I get it.
Well, cause.
I get my cue. I know what you're saying.
The understanding is, is that we have to meet objective standards. Or we have to bring forward objective standards, either through an ordinance or through some sort of a policy piece. The ordinance makes a lot more sense. Not only that, but I mean, in October of last year, I went to a planning conference in Riverside. And what was the most, what was the most attended seminar? This. I couldn't get in.
Oh, wow.
I was outside listening.
Every city wants.
And every planner and city manager that was there was in there. Like, everything else was thin. No one wanted to hear about Sequa. Everybody wanted to hear about objective design standards during that time.
The exceptions.
It was very, it was a very well-attended piece. And what I got out of it was the state is doing what they want to do and you're just, you're meant to just check a box.
Yes.
And I thought, boy, that is just, that's interesting.
That's how bad they want housing.
Oh, yeah. No, they're pushing it very, very hard.
I mean, that's, if I'm listening to a fifty-five minute seminar, I just summed it up in, in two sentences, right there. That's really what, they went through a couple of different case studies for cities, right? Riverside was one of them. And I was just like, hmm.
Yeah, I think.
Alright.
The actions the state is taking, they don't care that the colors don't match with the town, right? They don't care about these things that.
They don't care if there's no parking.
So, talking offline, I think we're, we'll come back with something. I think it'll end up being something where we'll explain the rationale for where we're landing and why.
And we can provide more information to you of the, it sounds like the support for where these things are coming from. I mean, it might be quite a hearty.
The comparisons, the, the points on the triangle.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm just letting you know, it's my, like, in my authority as a planning commissioner to make recommendations on to amend any resolution with what we would like to see. I will be pushing for those things. I appreciate you have to do your, your job and then.
Yeah, no, it's.
You meet us here and then I maybe, you know, hope asking to push further from the.
I think that's the biggest thing I've heard tonight is that we need to provide more background on how these things work. I think Lucas had sent an email um, two weeks, I don't know, time flies. Of a video of how all the laws fit together from one of my colleagues who's planning council before me. I think it was a four hour meeting.
I remember that.
Maybe something to listen to on the, on your drive. But he walks through.
He does, he does a great job.
Super, super smart. He has a flow chart that I can share with you two of how all of the laws fit together.
Affordable housing.
Which is helpful because there are so many.
Yeah.
But if you have time to listen to that video, I think it'll help provide more context.
I could use, I could use it re- uh, refresh.
Basically, his long story was like, your code does not apply if it's affordable housing project.
Pretty much.
Unless it's, I think it was just for single family homes. That was the only time our code applied.
But this is what I'm getting at. We're not saying you, your project is denied or can't move forward. We're saying there's now two lanes. Just like when you're driving a car and there's four, three people in the car or two people, you can go in the fast lane. Or in the Bay Area, if you pay for a fast pass, you can go in the fast lane. You don't have the right otherwise if you're a single driver, you're not paying for that. But you still have use of the public highway and you can still get to where you're going.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that's where I think it is a defensible position that may be novel, but it, we're not necessarily precluded. That's my interpretation.
That'd be great. If we could do that, that'd be awesome.
I'm all for pushing the envelope as far as we can. We'll, we'll see where, where that lands.
Sure.
Well, the truth is that what the state legislature is doing is draconian.
Yes.
And uh, and beyond the belief of anyone who cares about providing a community with.
They don't care about communities anymore.
They don't, they don't.
On, on the other hand, if, if we had not had the state pushing hard. We would not have the affordable housing that we have approved in the last couple of years here in Ojai. I can guarantee you that.
I don't disagree that they're being draconian, but I don't think we should also like step up and say, here's what we think. And then they can push back and put us into place, but I don't think we should just sit down. Um, I do think we should have a defensible position to defend our city.
We should just lay down and say, hey, let's put ten thousand more units in the valley.
Yeah. Um, I have nothing else.
I don't either. Um, so.
Okay. I think we've.
Well, hang on, let, are you, are you guys satisfied with?
Can, can you um, call for public comment?
Oh, yes, I apologize.
This is a discussion, but we still. Discussion, but we still need to take public comment.
Where do I find this video?
I don't have any cards, Sherry. Is there anybody online? Public comment? No? Okay. No public comment online. Um, you guys feel like this, you got enough ammunition, ammunition to go back and do stuff?
So what's gonna come back before this body is a resolution with revisions?
Perfect.
Um, based on the comments received here. I've also got some things that I noted in here as well, cause I've started poring through it again. I did it this afternoon, I'm sorry.
It's hard, the, the working, I'm gonna say, working on.
This is very difficult.
We were starting to see cross-eyed where like you,
Oh, yeah.
We, you have to, you have to take space from something like this.
Yeah.
Because you stop catching, catching your own mistakes, right? So it's helpful for us, I think, to hear your feedback and look at it with fresh eyes, cause we worked on it for a really long time.
It's, it's very meaty and I appreciate all the effort you guys went to do. And I, I really, really do appreciate you looking at the other cities to see what they have been doing. And not just looking at like, hey, what's Oxnard up to?
Yeah. Look, Oxnard was a good, like, uh, starting point, but it certainly was like, oh, well, let's do something different.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think the challenge too is that cities of similar size to Ojai just haven't,
Yeah.
Haven't adopted. So we tried to find cities that aesthetically
Yeah.
Have the same vibe.
Right.
We're go, you know, or trying for it, um, at least. So I appreciate that, but yeah.
Thank you guys.
I think we have marching orders.
Yeah.
Alright, so let's move on to, uh, future agenda items, considering that one is to bed. Last item. So, future agenda items. Boy, we've got a few of them in this next one. I want to update this list. I, then actually, it's good that there's a question mark by it. The DRP twenty-five dash zero zero four, seven fifteen East Ojai Avenue, smoker out of the gate and paint. I've taken a closer look at that and I think we're gonna process it as a DE. You're still gonna see it, but it's gonna be at my, at my discretion. If you don't agree, obviously you have the, the process by which to call it up. But it's so simple and straightforward. And looking at it again, um, I think we're gonna leave it at that level.
Alright.
The other three, um, are coming forward, including Mallory Way.
Now, question, do you feel like having these three items on the docket for July second would be a little bit much? Should we break that up a little bit?
Here's the situation, and it's the reason why we've kinda lined these up the way we, the way, um, I have tonight, at least for discussion. Is that I will not be in the country on the sixteenth.
Oh, good for you.
So, if there's a way in which we can not have the meeting on the sixteenth, if you feel as if three is too many and you wanna still hold on the sixteenth, I just won't be here.
Right.
You'll have, likely you'll have Mara in support. Taylor will be here.
Is Mara handling maybe like twenty-five dash zero zero one or twenty-five dash zero zero three?
She's handling twenty-five dash zero zero one and she's helping out with twenty-five dash zero zero three. I'm exclusively doing, uh, the four fifteen Mallory Way.
Okay.
Then maybe.
Totally comfortable with that. Yeah, if Mara is, if Mara is leading those efforts, maybe we push this.
The other two are pretty straightforward. I mean, I know we've had some pretty extensive discussions regarding additions of second story. But I think this one isn't as
Contentious?
Contentious as we've seen in the past.
Oh, okay.
You guys are gonna hate me.
You're not gonna be here.
July second, I may be in the Bay Area for work.
Oh.
I literally today, I was like, yeah, I could be there.
So you could, you could participate
Yeah.
Remotely. But you have to, uh, pub, post the agenda at your location and have it open to the public.
What do you mean? My hotel room?
Yeah.
Oh, so you can do like a conference room downstairs?
Yeah.
That's crazy.
He did it, he posted in Canada, I believe.
Hold on, that was, that was a little bit different. That was during the pandemic though.
No, that was after pandemic.
So under the, under the traditional rules.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Under the traditional rules, as long as, you can have it at multiple locations, as long as every single location is on the agenda, it's open to the public, you allow for public comment, um.
My wife's not gonna like that.
Floor on that one.
Well, but I mean, there, if you're staying in a hotel, they might have like a office space, right?
I'm just making jokes, yeah.
But we have, we have had council members like, this is where I'm staying if you wanna come to the house.
Crazy.
Here it is.
Yeah.
Right?
Um, okay. Uh, we'll see if, if I can make that work if.
Mallory Way is a big deal.
That's a big deal.
Of course, of course. Yeah, yeah. That's, that's why I'm actually being very, very upfront, yeah.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Okay, cool. So yeah, if we can move those two items to the sixteenth and have Mara present, that'd be wonderful.
They've already been legally noticed, Lucas. Have talked about.
Sherry?
What was that? Hold on, what do we, what, say that again, Sherry?
They've already been legally, they're in the newspaper noticed for that date.
Good, so we've already noticed these because they were a public hearing item.
But you could continue to a date certain.
Not sure how happy the applicants will be.
That is a, not a legal question.
It's a temperature question.
Sherry's the one who feels the temperature on a daily basis, so.
Well, let's, uh, let's make the proposal to move it to the date certain of July sixteenth and see what the applicant says.
Here's, okay, so here's my recommendation. And then hear me out here. We have all three on the agenda and if.
I don't know what that was. That was weird. Anyway, I think it's the AC.
Okay, good. That's, we all agree with that's the AC. If we have a late hour, we can always continue it to the next, to the next meeting. That allows us to stay within the public hearing realm and we, and we don't have to renotice and it just gets continued to the next meeting.
And we start with Mallory Way, so we get that accomplished.
Because it's already been heard before, it would be the first item.
Um, regarding that, we had talked about a field trip, a guided tour, if you will, through the Mallory Way. Is that still, I mean, I would like to do that before.
Hold that conversation for, commission member reports. And let's talk about it then.
Yeah, I like that. Alright, let's move on. Uh, director's report.
Yes, I actually have a couple of things.
Alright.
Um, so I think it is two things. So June twenty-fourth, we have the joint meeting.
Yeah.
I wanna remind everybody of that.
Cool.
It is scheduled for two hours. This is gonna be our first two hour, um, joint meeting. So remember we had the five items on there?
Mm-hmm.
I think we're gonna, we should be able to cover all five. And if there's other ones that, that we wanna discuss as well, um, like for instance, some of the stuff we were talking about earlier tonight, Title X stuff, some cleanup stuff.
What, what time is that meeting?
Four o'clock.
Four, four to six.
It'd be four to six.
Kent?
Kent Hall. Yep.
Might be tough for me to be there for the first hour. Uh, I'd just have, have to work.
Understood. So then you're, you're there for the second half. We'll catch you up with, um, what's going on with the first half.
Cool.
We, we'll have a staff report on.
Yes, there will be a staff report. And basically what it is, is I've already, it's already been written. It's a draft form. So it's basically just covering all the items that we've already talked about. So it's nothing new that you're gonna be seeing here. Yeah, shouldn't be a surprise.
Cool. Alright.
The second item is something that I had intended putting on this agenda, but, um, overlooked it, given some of the other things we've been working on. And that is, so the commission handbook was adopted at the beginning of this year. And what that allows for, there's a provision in there that gives, um, a task to this body as a secretary. So you, you would be basically appointing someone as a secretary for the minutes. So keeping the minutes and then bringing those minutes back. Right now, Sherry does it or Ida does it, you as a body would be selecting someone to do that.
So the process that is being handled for other commissions is, if there's a secretary on this commission, Sherry will still plug it into the, into the format, but during the meeting, actually taking what the motions are, um, would be the task of the secretary and what the vote was.
Is it somebody in the body here?
Yes.
Oh.
Maybe Commissioner Chesley.
You could assign us, I like that. You could assign it to the one that's not here. Look, but it'll be on the next.
Today, yes.
Be on the next agenda for discussion.
If I'm not here for the first hour, I logically can't be the secretary.
Oh, boy. Okay. Alright, moving on. Um, let's do commission member report now. Now let's talk about going to visit these Mallory Way places.
Just ask this question one more time. This meeting on the twenty-fourth, joint meeting of the city council, June twenty-fourth.
June twenty-fourth.
At four o'clock.
At four PM.
In Kent Hall.
Next week.
And is it, is, is it like a finite, is it four until?
Six.
Or until six.
Four until six, okay. Great.
Just so you know, this commission has been asking for a meeting.
We have.
With, with the council for two years.
I know.
It has literally been two years. It was, it was in June of twenty twenty-three, the last time.
It got on my calendar as July twenty-fourth.
Oh, jeez, yeah, that would be no good. You.
July twenty-fourth works. Alright, uh, commission member reports. Let's talk about the visits.
Sure.
So, uh, so that I'm clear, do you wanna go together or separately?
I would prefer to go together. That's why I didn't respond to rescheduling for tomorrow. Uh, I, I thought we would all be there together with a developer to be able to like get their perspective on how it's all gonna come together.
So if we do that, we have to notice it as a meeting.
Yep.
And you have to call for public comment at the site.
How do they do that? The winery visit that I missed. Cause I thought multiple like commissioners were there.
Did it in groups.
There's two by two, I think.
Yep.
Two, two, two of us can go chat, so.
Yeah, you guys went.
Yeah, we went.
Yeah, we went.
And I know Jonathan went. He went to, I think.
He went to Santa Barbara and watched the crane bring in the actual unit and put it in place. As an architect, that was.
That's pretty cool. I haven't went yet. I haven't had a chance to.
Well, there are two things. One is, is look at the site and the other one is look at the building.
Yes.
The, and, and the building type.
Yes, you guys went to Westlake, right?
Went down to Westlake, see the building.
Yeah, I, I do highly encourage you also go to, to Mallory Way. I think there's, there's a huge advantage. I've walked that site more times than I can remember at this point, so I know it very well, but.
Drainage is going to be a big issue. That is why I am looking for a guided tour, because I could wander around there and never figure it out.
Yep.
So.
And if I'm not, then I, I guess I shouldn't ask this now, but that property floods every year, right?
Not this year.
When we have rain.
When we have rain.
Yeah, the two, the two or three previous years, um, yeah, it has not been good. Okay.
Have they, have they decided?
They've also done some stuff with drainage, according to Steve Quelosi.
They're working on it.
Yeah.
For cottages, yes. Cause that was already taken care of. Now we're looking at the area that will feed cottages.
Feeds it, okay.
Have they made any decisions that have affected their design? Differentiating it from what they presented to us previously and what they now are doing. For instance.
I can't answer that question.
Yeah, I was gonna say, are we allowed to talk about this issue?
I think we're getting too far. If we wanna talk about site visit and doing it together, you could give that direction.
Yeah.
Um.
Thank you for shuffling my hands.
Yeah, you're welcome. We are, like, I can feel.
I just can't, I know.
They're going down rabbit holes.
They've actually moved off of that at this point.
I know, but we can't talk about it.
I'm not asking to talk about it now, I'm just wondering.
Like blink twice.
I'm really struggling with the ability to support, you know, being present with my two babies and my wife, and then also having just come back to work as of last Friday. And so I'm wondering, when would we go or when can one or two of us go? Um, cause the working hours, it gets really intense. And then I'm trying to be present, you know, before and after. Is a Saturday morning open for the developer?
Yes.
Does staff have to be there?
No.
Great, cause I don't want you to come here on a Saturday. I want you to spend time with your family.
Yes, thank you. But to be fair, it's probably better that you have that conversation just with the developer.
Oh, it is. Yeah, yeah, for sure.
And I, I'm happy to carve out like a Saturday or Sunday morning and I'd probably bring my.
It sounds like it would be better if you found your own way to seeing the property. And then if you wanna brown act with one of your commissioner, you know, fellow cop commissioners, you could do that.
Were cops?
I was gonna say colleagues and then I stopped halfway through.
Okay.
Cause I was like, no, that doesn't feel right. I guess you're colleagues too.
Kinda colleagues.
I don't have anything to report myself.
Yeah, I don't either. Um, okay, cool.
You wanted to talk about the.
Oh, you wanna talk about the visit?
Yeah, um, uh, I must say, we'll, we'll start with a thank you to Judy who drove us down there and back. Um, it's further away than I.
Yeah, it's, it's a trek.
The Somas.
We came upon it, the building that is.
Single story.
And it is, one of the issues we talked about was the fa, fact that it was a metal clad building.
Yeah.
What that would look like. It was quite different than I thought. On the other hand, um, I think it's a good thing to look at what they mean by a metal clad building. It was the thing that was most concerning to us as we left.
They're reporting.
It was, it's flat steel.
Yeah.
Um, with, uh, it painted or, or, um.
Dark brown, yeah, finished that's.
Yeah, just, but it's a shiny metal.
Not shiny.
Flat finish.
Flat.
And flat meaning not shiny flat, but flat.
Matte.
There's no, there's no texture to the metal.
Yeah, okay.
Um, and, uh, I think it was the, the biggest shock to look at it, cause it was not what I expected. I expected it to look like a metal, like aluminum metal mobile home. And instead, it looked like, more like an industrial building.
And is, was that a positive review? Was that a negative review?
Good, bad? Do you like it?
No!
Can't do that?
No.
Okay, sorry.
No.
Yeah, don't answer my question.
Then never mind.
It already, yes.
I just added objective.
Alright, I was starting, I'm like, oh, please don't. We can talk about it next time.
Yeah, yeah, great. I'm sorry for asking.
No, it's okay. It's okay. I'm, I'm the wet blanket.
Yeah.
Alright, the, um, interior, which is quite small, I mean, it was less than a thousand feet. I think it was less than nine hundred feet, eight hundred and something like that, was, um, there's nobody listening, right, Sherry? They, they managed to, they managed to pack.
Being recorded.
They managed to pack ten pounds into a five pound bag.
Get the hook out.